From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason?
Here.
Supervisor Scrivener?
Here.
Supervisor Maggert?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 24, 2017, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with our flag salute, and that will be led by John Hefner with the Bakersfield City Sister City Project. And I'd ask if you would all remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Please stand.
Salute.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good morning, everyone. If you would like to follow along with our agendas today, they are located at the two back tables. I know we have a big crowd, and so if we do run through them, we would be happy to bring more out. You can just notify one of the staff people up here at the dais, and we can arrange for that. We're going to begin with our consent agenda. All items listed with a C-A above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I'm going to read the consent agenda items. Starting on page two, item three is on consent, as well as item six and item seven. And on page three, all items eight through fifteen are on consent. On page four, items sixteen through nineteen are on consent, as well as twenty-one through twenty-three. On page five, all items twenty-four through thirty-one are on consent. On page six, all items thirty-two through thirty-nine are on consent. On page seven, item forty is on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda. So I'll ask other -- any members of the audience who would like to make any comments on the consent agenda items. Any hands? Okay. Seeing none, I'll return to the board and ask if any board members would like to remove an item. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Couch?
I need to remove item seven for a very brief discussion by the airport director.
Okay, so we will hear item seven in listed sequence.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved, with the exception of item seven.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. And that takes us back to page two on our agenda, under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is a certificate of recognition honoring and welcoming the Saint Jean de Luce delegation from France to Kern County and expressing countywide appreciation for their affiliation with the Bakersfield Sister City Project. And Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Does it need a motion?
No, it's just a certificate.
Thank you. You know, three of us served on the Bakersfield City Council, so we are familiar as maybe should be more familiar with the Sister City Project. And I think it was started during the Eisenhower administration. It was designed to have people get to know and become friends with people in other countries, and that would lead to less conflict and less war. That was the intent. Anyway, we are proud today to honor some visitors today, and I'm going to turn it over to the vice mayor in a moment. Some of us have been a vice mayor before, so we know what he has to deal with. But we are excited about having a new sister city. It's a European city, Saint Jean de Luce. By the way, you all chose me to do this because of my exquisite French accent.
Parlez-vous français?
It's located near France's border, where Spain meets the Atlantic Ocean. It's also great because they have a very vibrant Basque community, which we are familiar with here. So I'm going to read the proclamation. I'm going to turn this over to Eric Sorel, who is the vice mayor of Saint Jean de Luce, and let him say a couple of words. The recognition reads, "It's being presented to the Saint Jean de Luce delegation honoring and welcoming the Saint Jean de Luce delegation from France to Kern County and expressing countywide appreciation for their affiliation with the Bakersfield Sister City Program and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to the community in Kern County." It's signed by all the members of the Board of Supervisors dated today, October 24, 2017. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, welcome to Bakersfield and Kern County. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. It's one honor for us to be here with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Supervisor Couch, and welcome to our distinguished guests, and thank you. The next item on our agenda is an item under public request, item number two. This is a request of Karen King, Chief Executive Officer, Golden Empire Transit District, to address the board regarding GETS, thanks to our veterans with free rides for the month of November. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Karen King, GETS CEO, and I'm here this morning to let you know about something that we have going on in our community. As you know, November 11th is Veterans Day, and for the full month of November, GETS will be offering free rides to all veterans and active service members. We're very happy to do that for those who have served our country. In addition to providing them free rides, you'll notice we are going to wrap one of our buses with a thank you to our veterans so that our whole community can know how proud we are of those who have made the sacrifice to serve our country. So if you would please pass that information on to your constituents and let them know we'd like them to come out and ride the bus. Our employees are excited to be able to thank them individually for their service, and again, it's for the entire month of November.
Thank you, Ms. King. That's fantastic, and we appreciate you being here, and we will spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to exercise some chairman's discretion here. I'm going to trail items four and five to the end of this morning session. We have a lot to get to, and I want to make sure we have plenty of time for that. And so we're then going to move to item seven, which was pulled off of consent by Supervisor Couch. And this is an item under airports. Report on progress of Small Community Air Service Development Program grant for Meadows Field Airport. And we have Richard Strickland. He is our airport director here. And so, Mr. Strickland, when you are ready, I'll ask that you begin your presentation on this.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisor. Pleasure to be here to provide this information to you. The Small Community Air Service Development Program, it's an annual U.S. Department of Transportation program. It's designed to enhance and promote air service in small communities. The U.S. Department of Transportation provides assistance in the form of a financial grant. Airports respond to an RFP application, including business case justifying, and the proposed route must be specific. In this particular case, a hub in Texas. U.S. DOT SCASD program, our request will be for $600,000. Probability of achieving air service is much higher when the community has some skin in the game. We're recommending at least 30% of a grant match request. Currently, at this moment in time, we have $70,000 that has been raised so far. U.S. DOT criteria to win the grant, grant available only to small and non-hub airports, demonstrated loss of airline seat capacity and declining passenger traffic, high percentage of leakage to other airports, high average fares, and proposals submitted with an airline letter of support are favored over proposals without. U.S. DOT SCASD fax, last two years, 40 to 50 applications have been received. Last year, only nine airports were awarded a grant. Community dollar match ranges from 19 to 100%, and we're trying to achieve at least 30%. With me this morning, I've got Jennifer Pitcher with WISPA, who helped with the overall program. Would also like to recognize and thank Supervisor Couch and his office for their support with working with WISPA over some of the entities that have donated the funds.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Strickland, for the information, and getting air service back to either Dallas or Houston, I think, would be a great thing for the community, and I appreciate your efforts on that. I want to recognize WISPA for their work on this also and the contributions that will obviously soon become, one day, become public. But I really wanted to pull this off just to make a referral to the CAO's office to ask Mr. Alsop to work with you. I think when this, at some point, it's going to come back to us, and it's going to be our decision that we're going to have to probably make a contribution as well, maybe a matching contribution to what the industry is stepping up and doing. So I want to make that referral to you. It's obviously a budget issue, but I would be supportive of that, and maybe you can give us an idea on the timing of when the grant is submitted, when you will know if we're successful or not, and when we'll be needing to make that decision.
The RFP is now out from the U.S. Department of Transportation. We'd like to submit it by the first week of December. Obviously, as we're putting the grant document together, we need to know whether we have the matching funds already. As you know, we've been working alongside WISPA and various oil companies within the Valley for several months now, trying to pull everything together, and at this point in time, we've got donations from...
So far, we have commitments from Chevron, CRC, NALCO, and Era, pretty significant commitments, and we will continue to reach out to other companies as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I would think we only have one more board meeting in which we'd be able to discuss the item, which would be November 14th.
Would that be possible, Mr. Alsop, to bring it back then?
Chairman Scrivener, Supervisor Couch, we will work to bring it back then. I'm not sure what the agenda looks like that day, but certainly, if this is a priority, we'll work and do all we can to bring it back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Thank you, Mr. Strickland and Ms. Pitcher. I'll ask if there are any members of the audience who would like to make any comment on this item before I return to the board. Okay, seeing none, the requested action is to receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 20. This is an item under the County Administrative Office General Services Division. This is a report on Kern County Family Justice Center Memorandum of Understanding on Use of Property at 2101 Oak Street, Bakersfield. And I'll turn to Ryan Alsop, our CAO, to start us off. Mr. Alsop, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to turn this over to our acting Assistant CAO for General Services, Mr. Jeffrey Hill.
Good morning, Mr. Hill.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, members of the board. The Kern County District Attorney's Office has been awarded grant funding to operate the Kern County Family Justice Center. This program has certain space needs relating to location and size, as well as short-term and long-term needs. The General Services Property Management Division of the CAO has been working with the District Attorney's Office to identify appropriate space. Together with the District Attorney's Office, we've identified the building occupied currently by Board of Trade, soon to be unoccupied by Board of Trade, as a good fit for the short-term operation of this program. This building is located at 2101 Oak Street, adjacent to Beach Park. We've prepared a memorandum of understanding, and it's attached with the District Attorney for the use of the space, and the MOU sets the term of occupancy for three years and can be extended if needed. General Services continues to work with the District Attorney to identify space needs for longer-term extension of the program, if that's appropriate. That's the end of my comments, and DA Lisa Green is here to make some other comments, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Ms. Green.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, members of the board. I don't really know where to begin. We are so excited to, if the board agrees that we have this building available to us, the Board of Trade building, we're hopeful that we would be able to open the Family Justice Center, which will help domestic violence victims and their children by the end of the year. That's our timetable. You all know, because I've come and spoken to each of you, both in this setting and privately, that this is a project I've been working on for close to seven years, and it's about to become a reality to help people in our community that honestly are unable to help themselves. I particularly want to thank Melissa Allen, who's in the audience, and Mike Raceburn, supervisors, who began with this project, Scott Johnson, the Assistant District Attorney, Scott Spielman, who have been so helpful, and then Kristen Barnard, who's serving as our executive director, who's actually out of town working on this project. This is a humble beginning, but I am so humbled that we are able to provide this service. I want to thank all of the board members. I do want to give us another public thank you to Supervisor Perez, who has supported this from the beginning and has been a constant source of support on this project. But beyond that, I do want to tell members of the board, as I said, I've been working on this a long time, and it's taken a long time, and honestly, this could not and would not have happened without the support of CAO Ryan Alsop. And I want to thank Mr. Alsop for making this project important to him because he knew, one, that it was important to me, but more importantly, that he knew how important and the need that we had in our community. I'd like to thank Jeff Hill and the other people in the CAO's office, General Services Division. There's so many people, I could go on and on. And then our partners. When we had a strategic planning meeting five years ago, we had 124 partners on this project. It has the support of everyone, and I'm happy to say that when we brought the grant to the board that Jeff Hill mentioned, we brought it to the board in June of 16, and it's been a work in progress since then, but I'm happy to report that it was actually finalized last week. It's a $1.2 million grant over the course of the two years that we have to operate the Family Justice Center. There is no real general fund cost to the county, which is another plus. So thank you for your foresight on this, for supporting this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I just, this is a day, people say I don't get up here and smile enough, and this is a day where I can smile. Honestly, I'm humbled and grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Supervisor Press?
Thank you. Lisa, could I ask you a couple of questions? Well, this is exciting.
Yes.
A long time coming.
It is.
No one knows more than you. What are the chances you'll open by the end of the year?
We are cautiously optimistic. We placed orders for cubicles and that type of thing, but the building really doesn't need any work, other than signage. CSUB art students are doing a mural inside the building for us at no charge, so it is coming together. So I'm hopeful that it'll be by the end of the year, if not early 2018.
Aside from what's before us today, what else needs to happen for you to open by the end of the year?
I think it's just really getting the furniture, and I think that the Board of Trade is going to be out by the end of the month, is my understanding, by October 31st, and so there's really should be no impediments to moving in our partners that will be moving into the location, and then we'll, you know, work on getting a larger location, but this is the step in the right direction.
Got it. Well, congratulations. Long time coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Press. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make any comment on this item? Okay, I see a hand in the back. Please come forward.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, board members. I'm very appreciative to hear that Mrs...
Would you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Nadine Escalante. I'm very appreciative to hear Mrs. Green, her dream coming true of having the domestic violence unit, basically. I know, as time goes by and with county money and revenue and things, it's still going to take a long time for it to come to pass, but it's a very urgent matter that needs to be given attention immediately. I'm a victim of domestic violence. I saw last year one of my friends die, tragically die, and we were all changed forever when Katrina passed away. This unit has to be where it is able for us women, survivors of domestic violence, where we can walk in the door and we have somebody who's going to help us. We shouldn't have to come in and fight and fight and fight for our right to live, and this is what this program should be being made about. And my, hearing this, it just doesn't seem like it's all going to be one centralized location to where victims can come in and get, you know, paperwork for the restraining order, child custody issues, all this information that they need at this time and the emotional support that they need. And people forget that, and we forget that when our law enforcement are coming out and making their phone calls. These families need emotional support. Our children need emotional support because when they're going through these tragic situations, our children are going to school the next day, and we're expecting them to live okay, and they're not okay. So I hope that this, you guys, the board thinks of this as you're stepping forward, making these changes. Please think of the children. Please think of the children. Please think of our families.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Are there any other speakers? I want to, I'm going to give some, I'm going to make a request in a few minutes that we don't applaud because it does interfere with our sound system, so I hope that you all can respect that request. But I'm going to ask, are there any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. The requested action is to receive and file.
Salute.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Congratulations.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Green. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number 41. This is an item under the Planning and Natural Resources Department. I'm going to take a wild guess and assume that that's what most of the folks are here to speak on today. I did watch the entire Planning Commission proceedings, and so I'm going to make a couple of changes from what they did. Our Planning Commission did a great job for us, but one of the things that I'm going to do is, we're going to reserve this front row for people who are going to speak on this item. And the reason why I want to do that is because at the Planning Commission, we had lines of people that were coming down the aisle, and they, some of the folks were having trouble standing for that period of time. There was an hour or so of testimony. And so, once you, if you were in the front row, and once you come up and speak, I'd ask that you then move back to the back, open up that spot for someone else, and then I'm going to instruct people to come down and fill those spots if they want to speak. Okay, so that's the first thing that we're going to do. The second thing is, I want to ask that you spell your names, if it's, you know, a name that might be at all difficult for us. And also, at the Planning Commission, you were given, we were given two minutes a speaker. I'm going to extend that to three minutes a speaker. There were folks that I could tell had more to say, but I'm going to adhere very strictly to that three minutes, and we're going to have that timer up every time a speaker comes up. And so when that hits three minutes, your time is over. And so no going over your time, because we have a lot, I'm assuming we have a lot of people that like to speak. So how many, just by a show of hands, how many speakers are we going to have this morning? Okay, very good. So with that three-minute time limit now, we do need to go into closed session today, and we have an item to consider on that, and so we are going to conclude the public hearing before noon today. And if we get finished earlier than that with the number of speakers, then that is great, but at noon, we're going into closed session. And so I think that covers all of our ground rules. I'm going to begin this morning with our remote testimony. We do have two locations in Kern County that have speakers that would like to give testimony, and so we're going to go to Mojave first, and then we'll go to Ridgecrest. It's just alphabetical. And so...
District one, district two.
Oh, thank you. We also have a, we also have an interpreter that is available today, and that is Mr. Rojas, and so he's a, he can interpret in Spanish. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Rojas to come down. Is he, is he with us this morning? Please come down. Mr. Rojas, good morning. And so would you please determine if your services are required, and so I just ask if you can determine if there's anyone in the audience that needs Spanish interpretation?
Sure.
Okay, do we have a show of hands? Anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. If we do have someone who does come in and join us later, he will be available for the entire morning to assist. Okay? So now we will begin with the items. So this is a request from Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department for the Kern County Cannabis Land Use Ordinance Revision to the Kern County Zoning Ordinance, and we're going to begin with Laura Ly Oviette. She is the Director of said department. Ms. Oviette, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, members of the board. This is the proposal to amend the zoning ordinance and any other related county ordinances to address land use and community issues for both medicinal and adult use of cannabis and potential commercial activities for cultivation, processing, and sale of cannabis products. This project is only for the unincorporated communities of Kern County. First, I'd like to acknowledge my team. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, the division chief. You met one of my planners, Carlos Rojas, as well. I have Sean Beeler and Suzanne Hansen. They have worked diligently on this aggressive project to make the timeframes that we needed to do a full environmental impact report. I'd also like to acknowledge Kim Lee Horn, our EIR consultant. So we are now at Proposition 64. You have received in your package from a variety of departments additional information about Proposition 64, but I want to step back to the Compassionate Care Act in 1996. The California Proposition 215 originally allowed the sale and use of medical cannabis products and had few or no state oversight or licensing. Counties and cities have struggled with this new industry since 1996. We have had uneven results, and we have definitely had a lack of support from the state and the courts. In July of 2016, your board made a referral to staff to bring forward to you options for moving forward in this new world of Proposition 64. for moving forward in this new world of Proposition 64. The environmental impact report looked at a size of industry and looked at a variety of options. We have now brought to you these four options. And there is an addendum which includes information on public comments and a modified proposal for retail zoning, which is the last option on this slide. That has been uploaded to our website at the Planning Department and is available for the public. We have also provided copies to your board today. So the four options that we have brought to you is, one, Option A, a ban. Modified Option A, which is a temporary ban while both options, a ban and regulate and tax revenue, is placed on the June ballot. Option B, which is to regulate, which is recommended by the Planning Commission. And in your addendum, a modified retail zoning, Option B, regulate, which would modify the retail portion of the zoning for three items. One, industrial zoning only. Two, a 1,500-foot minimum from churches and a definition of churches and places of worship. And three, medicinal use only, no recreational retail sales. The Option A ban includes, as all of these options do, first, certification of the Environmental Impact Report. All of these options require that your board certify the Environmental Impact Report and make particular findings. The ban would repeal all the prior ordinances. And then this new banning of commercial cannabis activities for both medicinal and adult use would be placed in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, we would have all of our regulations in one place. We would reaffirm Proposition 64 that personal use of cannabis in public and county parks would remain illegal in Kern County. In addition, the state has just recently allowed for county and state fairs to have cannabis vendors. Part of the recommendation would be that you make a referral to the CAO to renegotiate that lease with the county fair and ban cannabis vendors. Cultivation of six plants for personal use is allowed under Proposition 64. However, you can ban outdoor cultivation, and under Option A ban, that would be part of it. In addition to implement this ordinance and the mitigation measure in the Environmental Impact Report, there would be the creation of an established funded Cannabis Activity Enforcement Task Force. Under the court determination that the 2009 ordinance, which was very simple and only included, one, that it had to go in any place where there were pharmacies, such as commercial and industrial, and, two, that it was 1,000 feet from schools, we are required to recognize existing determined legal retail medical dispensaries. The list at this point is 28. We are reviewing eight more that have provided information to us. But right now, there are 28 legally determined in the unincorporated area of the county, clustered in Oildale and Rosemont with a few scattered in other parts. The amortization program that would be placed, which is in the ban ordinance, would require that they close after one-year period with opportunity for extension. And I will be going over more details about this provision in a moment. The Cannabis Activity Enforcement Task Force was put together after consultation with these departments. As you can see, it would be a proactive task force as opposed to our enforcement that we have now, which is primarily based on people bringing us information that a property owner is getting ready to lease to someone, or they've seen evidence of plants being moved into a retail establishment. And right now, we are complaint-driven. We've been very successful with the network of community members, and we appreciate all of them who have taken the time to call us with their complaints and their information so that the departments can be proactive. However, given the Proposition 64 and given the misinformation that we believe will now be in the community of businesses, including that, quote, "it is legal," a proactive enforcement would be needed to put the ones we have into compliance, the 28-plus, make sure that they continue to be in compliance with the ban, and to aggressively let people know what the rules are, that it is banned, including the real estate developers, sorry, the property owners, the people who broker these, and specifically our out-of-county landlords. We anticipate the first year, we would need partial funding. And the idea behind that is that the state licensing is still getting up to speed. We would then ramp up. The second and third year would be a focused, enhanced activity. Given the state's licensing, we believe that the second and third year are the years when we need the most intensive enforcement. And the estimate based on conversations with these departments is 1.2 million to 2.7 million a year. The partial staffing would probably cost $500,000 for the first year. The source that we've identified is the General Fund or other sources of General Fund money. The state funding would be unavailable as the cannabis tax specifically, and we've provided that in your staff report, specifically states that if you ban cultivation and/or retail, there would be no money from the enforcement for law enforcement, fire protection, or public health and safety. Those restrictions do not apply to other sources of the cannabis tax, which are health-related, such as health education. Federal funding is uncertain. I wanted to go into detail about this amortization program. Under either a regulate or a ban, under any of the options, this would be the amortization program. Once again, we have 28 medicinal retail operations, and eight are under review. They would first have to be inspected by the Building Department, who would provide a list of what they were out of compliance with. It could be anything from they didn't get a building permit when they did their tenant improvements, to they need exit signs. And of course, Mr. Fenton is here today if you have questions about what such a compliance covers. At that point, they would have to go through their list, come into full compliance, and the building part won't have to provide the Planning Department with a letter saying they were in full compliance. No cultivation would be allowed. Some of these people are actually cultivating as well as selling. No cultivation would be allowed under this program. They would have to remove all their cultivation and attest with an inspection that there was no cultivation. In addition, some of them are in litigation with your board, or your board is in litigation with them. And so any litigation issues would have to be resolved, and council would address that at the time. At that time, we would issue a letter that they could take to the state of California and letting them know that they should be seeking a temporary license only for medicinal use and only for a period of one year under the ban and two years under the regulate. And we would put in our letter that no adult-use sales or products are allowed to be sold. If no license was attained, if they could not follow the state rules, the operation would close. I would like to note that council has informed us that we could put no other restrictions on these businesses. We cannot regulate how they operate. We cannot regulate their hours. We can regulate none of that. However, the state would be regulating all of that, and there would be rules. In addition, they would not be subject to any of the setbacks that have been added by your board, that would be added by your board under regulate. So the only setbacks they would have to comply with is, one, the 2009 ordinance of 1,000 feet from a school, and the state ordinance, which is 600 feet from a daycare center, a youth center, and a school. The next option is the Option B, regulate. Again, we would codify and move all of the ordinances into the zoning ordinance, and we would create standards and conditions. As we've reviewed for you at the briefing, there would be a half-mile for site plans for setbacks and 1,500 feet minimum for conditional use permits. Under this program, the 28 would have two years to relocate, meaning leave the county, get a conditional use permit for the location they have, get a CUP for another location in the unincorporated area, or close. In both amortizations, as a legal matter, there is a process whereby the dispensaries could come forward, provide their financial information to say, "We have spent more money on this facility," such as rent or improvements, "than we have recouped, and we have not been able to make enough money to financially break even." They would have to provide us with their financial information, and there would be a process in front of the Planning Director. And if they disagreed with that finding, it would be appealable to your board, where they could ask for more time. They could then say, "We'd like to remain open for another year so that we can recoup." However, they do have to provide their financial information to let us know how those numbers The EIR limited the regulatory to these options, 2 million square feet of buildings. To be clear, the state considers a greenhouse outdoor growing. This ordinance says that greenhouses are actually indoor cultivation. So that is a slight wordsmithing that the state has now imposed. 500,000 square feet of buildings for edibles, infused drinks, oils and solids, or anything else that they're making. Outdoor cultivation on this list, 150 acres, is literally either a shade structure, not a full structural greenhouse, or nothing over the plants. And that is the outdoor cultivation that we looked at. Then we have five county-wide testing facilities, which are independent testing facilities as required by the state, 20 distribution and transport, and a limit of potential up to a maximum of 32 county-wide retail stores, no more than two per named area. At this point, I'd like to go over the mapping that we've done to provide your board with information as well as the public. So the cannabis designated map. As a reminder, the state regulations have now made medicinal come into compliance with the same retail requirements as recreational. So the idea of a nonprofit collective will disappear on January 2nd. They will need a retail outlet. They will need a medicinal license or an adult-use license or both. It's the M license and the A license. Mobile delivery cannot be made from an undisclosed location. Mobile delivery can only be made with a license from the state from a retail brick-and-mortar operation that has a permit from the local jurisdiction. The retail does not have to be open to the public. So a retail operation could have a brick-and-mortar operation with mobile, but it's not open to the public. But we do have mobile operators now operating who will not reveal their physical location, have not established a physical location, and we're not clear where they're delivering these mobile from. So that will be out of, if we ban or we regulate, they will be out of compliance with the state, and we can bring state enforcement against them. So these 16 are based on KernCOG map that actually looks at census tracts. We took the 1,500-foot setback. We took the half-mile setback. We created setback maps. You have received full copies of all these maps, and they've been posted on our website since last Thursday. And we have now identified what areas would be available for retail, and in this case, retail, which is the most controversial. The yellow, I think on the regular maps it's orange, is industrial zoning, and the purple is commercial zoning. If you could zoom in, do you have a pointer, Mr. Murphy? Maybe not? Okay. And then the gray is city limits. Is there a next map? This is the half-mile buffer showing areas that could be available for warehouse cultivation, which is the half-mile. So we have placed a disclaimer on this map. I won't read the disclaimer, but it clearly states that this map cannot be used to say that you are in compliance with a setback. It cannot be provided to the state of California to claim that the county has approved their location because these setbacks are site-specific, and they need to be made from the designated building to the use, and we need to reconfirm that with a site visit. So we put a disclaimer on this map so that people don't go out and use this map and somehow try and use this to say that their project was approved. We've done this to provide communities with more input so that they understand the potential impacts. Adding churches and places of worship will not change this map since the majority of them are within near youth centers or near parks. So we have verified that adding churches would not change this. It could in very, very rare instances for the half-mile. But once again, this is an illustrative map, not a definitive. We have also looked at spheres of influence. One of the distinctions is that, as we scroll through, there we go. So we looked at putting all the spheres of influences off-limits, and we were unable to find enough industrial and commercial to make this viable under regulate. We do provide this for your information, and although industrial zoning is feasible, it is not feasible in all of these areas, and some of this industrial is completely already used. However, I would note that we will be reviewing the industrial modification. As you notice, the yellow is industrial. If we limited retail to only industrial, it would be outside most of the spheres of influences. Remember, this is not city limits. This is spheres of influences. And spheres of influences were reviewed by your board and adopted by your board, however, not adopted, but reviewed by your board. And when LAFCO does a sphere of influence, they look at commercial and industrial. That's the whole point of a sphere of influence, is to whether a city can annex it. Under Option B, regulate. Next. Can you do it full screen?
No.
Sorry. We would also be cleaning up the issue of the Williamson Act. Although cannabis would be a crop, we would recommend that your board amend the uniform rule and not give cannabis a Williamson Act contract. This is not applicable to hemp. Hemp has no THC in it, and therefore it is under different rules. And we are not proposing that hemp, if someone decides to do that as a project in Kern County, that they be exempt from Williamson Act. And then we also, under the regulate, noted that outdoor personal growing would have to have a locked enclosure and couldn't be viewed from a public walkway or roadway. It also could be banned based on your board's determination. Option B, regulate, we did provide you a fiscal. It would produce $1.5 million to the General Fund and $1 million in property taxes. The mitigation measure, which we've reviewed with you at the briefing, has changed slightly to allow for a homeless collaborative fund. Community benefit fund is up to $1 million, and we have added percentages such that if the full amount is not collected, that the CAO and the departments would understand what their percentages are. Part of the regulation is a referral to place a tax on a ballot. These are the revenues that could be accrued to the General Fund from a voter tax. The fiscal did look at all the taxes that the counties and cities have passed. This is not the lowest tax in California, but it is also not the highest tax. We estimated the full-time permanent jobs at 8,750, along with the construction and indirect jobs, and the potential for new job training programs. As you know, we did a full and complete environmental impact report. There is one mitigation measure under the ban option, which is to create the Cannabis Enforcement Task Force and 80 Enforcement Task Force and 82 mitigation measures under regulate. We have not received any more comments on the final EIR. The comments that we've received have been either, have been on the actual zoning ordinance. This is where information can be found on our website. I'd now like to end by reviewing the options before your board. First, all options certify the environmental impact report and make the findings. Option A is ban on commercial and public personal use of cannabis. Option B is regulate, which is the planning commission recommendation. Then the department has brought forward a modified option A, which is a temporary ban and under this temporary ban, the 28 would continue to be amortized. There would be a temporary ban until, and the ban, regulate with a tax would be placed on the June 2018 ballot. The ban ordinance would specifically state that depending on the outcome of that, the ban would automatically be repealed. So if the ban on the ballot went into effect, the temporary ban would be repealed. If the regulate with a tax went into effect, that would be based on a simple majority, whichever of them got the highest votes. The intention behind this is to preserve the status quo until the voters could determine which countywide, including cities, what the status of commercial cultivation would be. We have received significant public comments and between the phone calls and letters, we have 100 communications to ban and 300 communications to support regulation. Those, of course, are people who have taken the time to write and call a variety of locations and we have accumulated them and provided to your board. The last is a modified retail zoning option A, regulate. This modification could be placed into the temporary ban and placed on the ballot as well. There is no restriction on your board in making adjustments to the regulatory to a certain extent, as long as they're within the confines of the EIR. The retail is the, has engendered the biggest complaints. It is the largest impact on our communities. It is over-concentrated in two of our communities. And so staff is recommending, one, that we limit it to industrial zoning to take it out of the commercial businesses. The complaint that has been lodged is well documented. Other business owners that have to be next door to these operations have complained that it has reduced their traffic, it has reduced their ability to lease, and we have created a market where landlords are evicting established businesses in order to lease in commercial areas. We need thriving grocery stores, we need thriving dry cleaners, we need a balanced community. This is only one industry. Therefore, in looking, we have provided you a spreadsheet that validates for the record that there is enough industrial zoning outside the setbacks that there could potentially be, with a CUP process, 32 countywide, and we are not unduly restricting this industry. There are people who may say this is Measure G. It is not Measure G. We did not do a full environmental impact for Measure G and we are not requiring a mile and we didn't require a discretionary conditional use permit. So it is very, very distinctly different from the original Measure G that was placed on the ballot. Second, we are proposing to add churches to the 1,500-foot setback. The definition of a church, definition of a church would actually be placed so that there's no misunderstanding and a church is a religious place of worship that has land use permits, including a church, mosque or temple. And this same 1,500-foot minimum is for the parks and the libraries, therefore, we would be protecting everyone's equal protection under the Constitution that churches would be afforded the same protection. In addition, staff has reviewed extensively this issue of adult use. Most of, a large number of the complaints have been about expanding from medicinal to adult use, that adult use, that there may be legitimate uses for medicinal. We have, you will be hearing from your department heads who are, work in this areas about those uses. We've provided in the record a 600-page JAMA report that shows that there actually are legitimate uses. Therefore, the question becomes, has this industry shown itself to be a good neighbor? Has this industry in establishing the 28 that we have or the 120 that we have illegally countywide, actually integrated itself into communities seamlessly? And the answer is no. Therefore, the idea of establishing a regulatory retail and immediately expanding to adult use has been reconsidered by the department. We are bringing forward a concept that under retail, it would be medicinal only and we would still continue that the indoor cultivation, which is out in the A-zoned properties, is highly secured greenhouses, could be both recreational and medicinal since it would be providing not just exclusively for Kern County, but for Northern and Southern California and that those distinctions, those medicinal, those are not customers, those are plants. Therefore, there aren't the same impacts on a business community. So this is the modified retail zoning option A, regulate. We have provided in your addendum and in your original staff report, all the necessary recommendations and findings. That completes my presentation, Chairman Scrivener and members of the board. And at the end of this deliberations, when, when the board is prepared to understand motions for a variety of these, I will be prepared to walk your way through those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oviatt. I'm going to let everybody know what our sequence is going to be here. I neglected to notify everybody, I am going to ask if there are any county department heads that would like to make comment on this. There was a request from the board that county department heads, if they did have an interest in, in sharing their concerns or their thoughts, that we wanted to hear that. So I'm going to, I will ask that county department heads speak first before we go to the remote testimony, but before I do that, I'll ask if any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Oviatt before we go to the department heads. Okay, seeing none. If you are a county department head, either appointed or elected and you'd like to make comment, please come forward. We'll try to move through these quickly and then get to our remote testimony and then open it up for public comment here. And please state your name for the members of the public.
Good morning Supervisor Scrivener. My name is Matt Constantine, Director of Public Health, and I think Craig has a presentation he's going to get up for me, or Ms. Kraus. My comments this morning are limited, obviously, to only the health impacts of cannabis use and are centered around a newly released study that was released in January by the National Academies of Science, Engineering and Medicine. Let me also state that my comments are limited to the information, obviously, just about the health effects and some of this information is contradictory at times. Research on the health effects is also limited because of the classification of cannabis as a Schedule I substance and the health effects on children or those under the age of 18 is obviously limited. This recently released study reviewed the scientific research published since 1999 about what is known about the health impacts of cannabis and considered more than 10,000 scientific abstracts. The study analyzed and categorized health effects in a number of areas, a few of which I would like to just briefly discuss. The first one is on therapeutic effects. One of the therapeutic uses of cannabis is to treat chronic pain in adults. This study found in fact that patients who were treated with cannabis were more likely to experience a significant reduction in pain symptoms. There was also substantial evidence that cannabis, specifically edibles, helped with pain associated with multiple sclerosis and other chemotherapy-induced nausea and vomiting related to cancer treatment. For injury and death, this study found that there was substantial evidence that cannabis use prior to driving increases the risk being involved in a motor vehicle accident. Evidence was also found that in states where cannabis use is legal, there is an increased risk of unintentional cannabis overdose injuries among children. In one study, ingestion was the most common source of unintentional pediatric exposure, accounting for 78% of all incidents. Another study reported that from 2000 to 2013, the annual rate of poison calls to cannabis exposures among children younger than six years of age was almost three times higher than in states that had legalized medical cannabis prior to 2000 where cannabis remained illegal. So it was more common that children became exposed. In cancer, surprisingly, this study found that, found evidence that smoking cannabis doesn't necessarily increase the risk for cancers, specifically lung cancer, which is oftentimes associated with tobacco use. In addition, there was limited or insufficient evidence that smoking of cannabis during, excuse me, smoking of cannabis was an increased risk factors for other types of cancers or that cannabis used by a mother during pregnancy led to a greater risk of cancers in children. In relation to heart disease, stroke and diabetes, the study was unable to draw conclusions about the effect of cannabis use associated with heart attacks, strokes and diabetes and specifically stated that there is clearly a need for more research. For respiratory disease, the study found that-
Mr. Constantine, I'm going to interrupt you. You in the front row, sir.
Yes, sir.
Please do not make any comments. If you disagree with the speakers, I'm going to ask that everyone in the audience does not make any comments. I don't want to hear any, any cat calls, anyone disagreeing because I'm going to guarantee you that everybody in here is going to disagree with something that somebody says. And so everybody is going to behave yourself or you will be escorted out. Thank you. Mr. Constantine, please continue.
Yes, sir. In respiratory disease, the study found that repeated smoking of cannabis is associated with more frequent chronic bronchitis episodes and worse respiratory symptoms and, as would be expected, that quitting cannabis smoking is likely to reduce these conditions. Now, somewhat contradictory though, the study was unable to determine whether cannabis use is associated with certain respiratory diseases, including chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and asthma. In the area of mental health, the study found that substantial evidence that cannabis use is likely to increase the risk of developing schizophrenia and, to a lesser extent, depression. And again, somewhat contradictory, individuals diagnosed with these diseases, a history of cannabis use may be linked to better performance on learning and memory tasks. And finally, in this category, the study found that heavy cannabis users are more likely to report thoughts of suicide than non-users and in individuals with bipolar disorders, nearly daily cannabis users show increased symptoms of the disorder than non-users. In the prenatal and neonatal exposure, the study found strong evidence that smoking cannabis during pregnancy is linked to lower birth weights in children. However, the relationship between cannabis use and the mother and sudden infant death syndrome, cognitive and academic achievement remains unclear. And towards the end of this, the study found that learning, memory and attention are impaired immediately following cannabis use. And in addition, there is limited evidence to suggest that cannabis use is related to impairments in academic achievement, employment, income and social relationships. Now, in the area of problem cannabis use, the study found substantial evidence that with greater frequency of cannabis use, there is an increased likelihood of developing problem cannabis use. And there's also evidence to suggest that initiating cannabis use at a younger age increases the likelihood of developing problem cannabis use in the future. And then finally, the study found moderate evidence to suggest that there is a link between cannabis use and the development of substance dependency and the abuse for alcohol, tobacco and other illicit drugs. The committee, the study, excuse me, found limited evidence that cannabis use increases the rate of initiating other drug use, primarily tobacco. So again, somewhat contradictory. Supervisor Scrivener and members of the board, this study that I have been quoting has been highlighted by the California Department of Public Health. It's newly released. It obviously has more work that needs to be done. One of their prime recommendations is additional studies needed to be completed. And although some of the findings are somewhat contradictory, I felt it was relevant to bring this current study forward and to provide our perspective from the, from, from public health. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Constantine. Are there any questions for Mr. Constantine from members of the board? Okay, seeing none. Next department head, please. How many department heads do I have, just so I know? One, two, three, looks like three. Okay, thanks. Good morning. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning. Bill Walker, your Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Director. I want to first start by thanking the chairman, members of the board. I'd like to also thank the CAO and all public and stakeholders on both sides of this. I think if you said President Trump, gun control, abortion, or any number of issues, you're going to immediately have people on different sides who, no matter, as the chairman said, no matter what one person says, probably is not going to move their optic very much at that moment. And so I appreciate this opportunity to present to you. I will be presenting primarily on two areas. The first area is impact of cannabis use, especially on youth. The second is recommendations as it relates to prevention and, and policy related to Document-wise, I'm really drawing from two different areas. The first area is the excellent documents that the planning department included in your packet, the final environmental impact report, volume four, chapter seven. I want to highlight especially two documents that were in the appendices. The first is the cannabinoids for medical use systematic review and meta-analysis and the second is the health effects of cannabis and cannabinoids, the current state of evidence and recommendations for research. In a nutshell, those two actually concur with virtually everything that public health just presented to you in terms of the risks and the level of risks and the potential positive use in some medicinal areas. I also provided to you packets that included several documents from Ventura County, since Ventura is a sister county that is a bit ahead of us on the prevention curve so that you can see analysis that has already been put together by another county that is facing the same things that we are facing. I also included some documentation from my state, state organization, CBHDA, which is the California Behavioral Health Directors Association, as well as our consulting firm, Harbage, as well as the Rocky Mountain and North West High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas. So it's important to kind of know where items are coming from because the documents that the planning department included, included two very robust studies that are actually meta-analysis. So what they do is they take multiple studies and they put them together, they hold rigorous methodology standards and then they come and draw conclusions from them. I'm not going to go over the conclusions as the health department presented to you, but I am going to now focus the optic more on the effect on adolescents and the developing brain and the developing youth. Obviously, the, the goal of regulation or ban is that youth wouldn't be using the marijuana and the cannabinoids. That being said, we all know that how that's worked with tobacco and alcohol and so the importance of how we actually focus on our youth and prevention is vitally important. First up, the perception of risk is diminishing. That probably doesn't surprise anyone that in 1991, studies showed that approximately 79% of 12th graders thought that using marijuana would be bad for them, that it would be substantially bad for them. That has dropped in 2015 to 32%. And so what you see is now less than a third of our high school students think that smoking marijuana or taking other forms of cannabis would be detrimental to them. So there's an inverse relationship between perceived risk and teen cannabis use. And early onset of youth use equals greater risk for developing of a substance use disorder. There are two to four times more likely to develop an addiction to cannabis if you start smoking as a youth than as an adult. An adult who chooses to smoke marijuana or other forms of cannabis has about a 4% likelihood of developing an addiction. For an adolescent, it's 17%. So clearly, address- So clearly, addressing prevention at the adolescent level is imperative, no matter which direction we vote on this measure. Going to cite just a little bit of information from studies that were performed in Ventura. They looked at 132 samples of their youth that were brought in for treatment at an acute level of treatment. And of those 132, 98% of them were smoking marijuana or taking cannabis in some capacity. The average age of onset was 13. Keep in mind, this is before legalization. This is during the current way of getting cannabis. For that sample, 49% cannabis was their first drug of choice. So before alcohol, before tobacco, before anything, they were smoking cannabis, 49%. Only 17% started with alcohol. And of that group, 75% started with cannabis or cannabis and alcohol. And so the argument, and this is where you need to consider your optics of what is a gateway drug and what is the likelihood of there being impairment of our youth, is a grave risk with cannabis in our environment. So let's talk for a second about the adolescent brain. The adolescent brain is at risk for long-term heavy cannabis use showing a decrease in the size of the hippocampus, a brain structure important for learning and memory, by 12%. And so the impact, interestingly enough, during adolescence, the neural systems that control emotion and reward-seeking, the limbic system, is fully developed. So teenagers usually know how to have a good time. However, the area of the brain regions associated with executive functioning, for example, problem-solving, planning, working memory, and emotional regulation, are not. And so heavy cannabis use by youth actually impairs brain development, permanent brain development, which impairs education, high school graduation, going to college, et cetera, et cetera. And so again, no matter which way we go on this issue, looking at adolescent and prevention of our youth is imperative. Make a -- I'd like to make a couple of comments just about addiction. People have talked about, is cannabis addictive? And the answer is yes. The research quite clearly indicates that 9% to 11% of those that smoke marijuana overall will become addicted. I mentioned the 4% if you start after the age of 22, and much higher percent, 17%, if you start before the age of 18. And so we know that there's an addiction that we will need to deal with and that our department for your community will need to address. Also, the concentration has gone up. The concentration today is about 300% greater than it was 15, 20 years ago. And that means an increase of 3.7% in 198 of THC to 12.5% currently. So already mentioned the impact on psychiatric conditions, and this is very, very important is that my whole field of study has been working with people with mental health and substance abuse addictions. I spent 25 years teaching at Cal State in the Drug and Alcohol Program, and I ran the programs, the inpatient programs for childrens and adults before I became your crisis administrator, before I became your director of this department. So I'm very well-versed in the effects on drug and alcohol on minor and minor development of problems. So in the area of psychiatric conditions, especially psychotic conditions, it's already been mentioned by public health that there is much greater risk of developing these conditions if youth use cannabis products. So there's also, it's already been mentioned, the increase in vehicle motor crashes, accidental ingestion, and other problems. So I want to go now to what's, to me, very, very important, is a discussion briefly on what would be the proper prevention tactics. And interestingly enough, I'm going to read something to you also developed through Ventura, because a lot of times when we think of prevention, we think of, well, we go to the schools, you know, we tell the youth, don't use these drugs. We tell the parents, tell the youth, don't use these drugs. We work through churches to tell people, don't use these drugs. But in fact, the greatest prevention impact isn't through those measures. It's actually through, and I'm very pleased as I read through the stuff that the planning department has put together for you to consider, and all of the steps of protection that they're trying to work into that, because, as I read, "The prevention field has moved far beyond the confines of education and persuasion and understanding and developing effective youth prevention strategies in the contact of drugs that are legally available to adults but illegal for youth," alcohol and tobacco, and now cannabis. "The science is well-developed and particularly relevant to the implications for youth marijuana use. First and foremost, the science has found that the most effective strategies for reducing and preventing youth problems include raising the price, reducing the availability, and restricting youth exposure to commercial advertising for the drugs involved. The National Academy of Sciences, National Institute on Alcohol Abuse and Alcoholism, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the World Health Organization, and Surgeons General of the United States have documented the scientific evidence regarding these specific prevention strategies as they apply to alcoholic beverages, and have made specific recommendations for the implementation at federal, state, and local levels. Understanding this new approach to prevention involves a paradigm shift from a focus on individual youth, seeking to educate and persuade them to be abstinent and to intervene if they ignore the absence message, to a focus on the social, cultural, political, and economic environment that youth encounter in their daily lives. The messages youth receive in their everyday community in terms of how a legal drug is made available and marketed are far more powerful than any countervailing messages they hear from parents, teachers, and health officials. Environments are shaped by policy, which could be legislative laws, regulations, institutional company and school, and informal neighborhood watch programs. Policies are therefore an integral part of any comprehensive drug prevention strategies." One of the documents I've provided to you is also a document that gives the evidence-based programs for, let me quote it correctly, "for safeguarding and protecting our young people through the best practice recommendations." And it also provides ways of assuring that you don't develop monopolies that just build and continue to want to grow the sales versus actually meet the market needs. So what I would make as a recommendation is that regardless of a vote of A, B, or the subsets therein, is that you also consider that we continue to focus on prevention and prevention at a policy level, which I want to say first and foremost, I do believe the planning department has tried to include as much of that as they can in what they have put together. Again, I realize that no matter what I say, there will be some people on each side of the fence, some saying, yes, that's the best thing I've ever heard, and others thinking, the guy's an idiot. But I am your director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and I appreciate the time and am available for any questions.
Supervisor Perez, do you have a question for Mr. Walker?
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning.
Excuse me, I'm a little bit under the weather. Excuse me. Can you restate your statistics on youth exposure for marijuana use? You said it earlier, I caught most of it.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez, through the chair. I had stated that in 1991, 79% of 12th graders felt that--
No, I don't mean perception. I'm in use, exposure and use. It was earlier, it was before that comment.
So I made the comment that 4% of adults who start smoking after the age of 21 would become addicted, and that 17% before the age of 21 would become addicted. That was one of the statistics I mentioned. And I apologize if I'm not citing the statistic you're looking for.
Did I hear you right, Bill, that the exposure to alcohol use for teenagers, I thought I heard from you, has been reduced over time? Did you say that, Bill?
I don't think I said that the exposure has been reduced over time.
Or the incidence of teenage alcohol use, teenage alcohol use exclusively. Do you remember the statistic you cited?
I was, no, I don't, actually. I would have to go back through my notes, but I was not speaking to alcohol use specifically. In alcohol, I was speaking to the relevance of the way alcohol, what we've learned about alcohol use and how to prevent through policy versus just prevention, like at the schools. But I don't think I made a comment that alcohol use has reduced through the years.
Okay. I must have misunderstood you. Thank you, Bill.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Who'll be next, please? Okay, so we have our Public Works Director, our Sheriff, and our D A, and I think that that was all, okay, excuse me, Mr. Judd from Kern Medical as well. Okay. Good morning, Mr. Pope.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Craig Pope, Public Works Director. And within Public Works, we have the Division of Code Compliance, and I'll speak to some of the opinions we have over this topic of whether we regulate or ban the use of our sale and growth of marijuana. First of all, if we were to regulate, we'd have rules on where these facilities were, when they'd operate, and with those rules, we can then tailor it so that the public can find them palatable. I mean, that's the general thing that we do with all businesses. We don't just let them go willy-nilly, they don't get to open and close at any time during the day. We have rules of operation. So with regulation, that would come. And code compliance would be responsible for making those rules enforced. They would, you'd set the rules, we would enforce those rules, and that would be our role in it. We believe we could enforce those rules that you establish within what we already have as a crew. We have five to six officers at any given time, and these, we call them code compliance officers, they're not trained law enforcement. They are normal people like we are. We don't have any training for busting into a business. We don't have any training in arresting. We don't do that. We are there to make sure the rules are complied with. And if we were working with a business that had rules and knew they had something to lose by not complying with those rules, we find it fairly easy to work with them. If we were to ban, banning is another thing. We don't even really know what a ban looks like. We've tried to ban here, and we've been fairly unsuccessful working within the rules of code compliance. If people believe that you can ban it today, we want to ban it, and it disappears, they're wrong. We have out there, currently, we have a moratorium on no new facilities. Since that moratorium's been in place, we've probably had 40 new establishments open, and we've been unsuccessful at shutting any of those down. We think if there's to be a ban, it'd have to somehow then say, those facilities that are operating, and there won't be any rules on them, they'll pop up anywhere they want, they'll operate at any time they want, they will be working below the law. And under that, we feel it becomes law enforcement. It is beyond the ability of code to do that, at least on their own. We could work with law enforcement on it. But to just for code to be able to go out there and regulate, there are no regulations. If it's a ban, these facilities that keep popping up daily would be up and operating on their own, doing what they want, and it'd just be play, you know, whack-a-mole, chase them. We could probably lean on them along with law enforcement and get them to move next door or down the block. I think primarily, code compliance officers are not law enforcement. If we're going to go to something greater than compliance with rules, it's going to have to be a law enforcement operation. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Any questions for Mr. Pope? Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Chairman. Tell me to thank Craig about the task force.
The task force, that's to ban it, we'd have to have a multitude of county operations. I don't know what it'd look like. We don't even really know what a ban looks like. If we're going to try and say there is no facilities that grow marijuana or have no facilities that sell marijuana in this county, that is a very large task, and it will take everybody at the table to try and pull that off. It'd be quite expensive. It's not a code enforcement thing, it's probably not just a sheriff thing, it would be everybody that we have thrown at it.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Pope, thank you very much. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener and members of the board, Sheriff Donna Youngblood. I'm going to make my comments very short. I think everyone in this room knows what my stance is on this particular issue. But the one thing that I haven't heard is, that we haven't discussed today, is this is still a federal felony. And if we choose to regulate this drug, we are in fact giving people permission to go out and commit federal felonies. And as a law enforcement officer, I find that extremely troubling. One of the biggest complaints you've heard, that I've heard, phone calls, or the businesses that are next to a marijuana dispensary, a lot of them have told me they are going to have to close up because the people, the public won't come in because of the clientele that hangs out in those particular areas. A lot of the complaints I've had are from the people in the marijuana industry about they have a legal, what they perceive as a legal dispensary, and they complain about the people who set up illegal dispensaries in the area of where their business is. If you drive, go to Roseman, go up North Chester, and you'll really get a knife full of what they're talking about and what I'm talking about. What we've found over the years in dealing with marijuana is, since it is a cash-only product, they can't use banks, they can't write checks, so I guess when they pay their taxes, they'll come out of the suitcase of money. That's troubling. Anytime you have a drug and you have cash, you're going to have violent crime, and we have seen that. We've also seen over the years with some of these dispensaries, and I emphasize some, not all, that cross over into other illicit products, because this is about making money. And when they make money, it doesn't matter whether it's marijuana, heroin, guns, anything to make money. That is not to say all these people out here are like that, but there are percentages that we've run into over the years that do that. We also know that if you attempt to ban or attempt to regulate, there are people that are going to set up anyway, no matter what. Banning, regulating, isn't going to change the fact that we have a society right now that believes that we're not a land of laws and they don't have to follow those laws. So this is, there is no easy answer to this situation that we are facing. I have spoken with members of law enforcement in our county. Chief of Police Taft, Ed Whiting agrees in banning. Bob Barris from DEA banning. Scott Tonncliff from the District Attorney's Investigators, he's the chief investigator, ban. Michael Grant, Stine P D, chief, ban. Jerry Breckenridge, Arvin P D, chief, ban. Scott Kimball, McFarland P D, ban. Kevin Zimmerman, Shafter P D, ban. Ron Strand, Ridgecrest P D, ban. Ed Coleman, High School District Police, ban. And we know our Bakersfield Chief, Lyle Martin, is in support of that. We also know that the city of Taft, the city of Tatchby, the city of Bakersfield, and the city of Ridgecrest have all voted to ban this product. Lastly, I couldn't emphasize this enough, one of the things that bothers me more than anything, even though it may be somewhat symbolic, if we choose to regulate this drug, I think we send a message to our youth that this is okay, this is not a bad product. And it's a really scary message, I believe, to send to our youth. So with that, if you have questions on the crime rates or issues that we've had, Chief Deputy McCurtin is here to answer those questions specifically, but if you have any questions, me at behalf of the answering.
Thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Sheriff, what do you believe changes from one day to the next if this board, or a majority of the board imposes a ban, as you and your colleagues are asking for? What, you know, what in your mind and in the mind of your colleagues is going to be different today from tomorrow if the majority of this board bans this product?
Well, first of all, it's important to note that we have banned methamphetamine, heroin, we've banned burglary, we've banned theft, we've banned robbery. We still have all those things occur. We're not going to win that war. That isn't going to stop us from trying to do the best that we can to enforce the law, whatever the law is. And so if we regulate this, if this board chooses to regulate this, I'm going to find it very difficult within me to regulate something and say, it's okay to these people to commit a federal felony. I don't know where the feds are going to go on this particular issue as we go down the road. We have an Attorney General that may or may not take on this issue with people that are, we're telling it's okay when-- issue with people that are, we're telling it's okay, when in fact it may not be. So this isn't going to, whether we regulate or whether we ban, is not going to have a significant impact on what's occurring in our community. We're still going to have people that are going to sell this, and the law says they can grow it. The law says that they can, that they can smoke it. We don't, in law enforcement, we couldn't care less about those indoor grows in their house or their personal use, that's, or their medical use. That's a personal choice that we're not concerned with. But we are concerned with the organized crime aspect of this.
Absolutely. Sheriff, how do you incorporate the reality in your position, you've banned, we've banned meth, we've banned heroin, and a whole host of illegal substances that we know are profoundly consumed in this community, methamphetamine in particular, that we have tried many, many creative methods to stop and inform and educate. It seems remarkable to me that the one area that we have seen reduction in teen youth over the years and that we have some management over through Code Compliance and through public health is tobacco use to minors, alcohol sales to minors. These things, we're sort of in a perpetual crackdown of, and lots of it falls through the cracks, of course. But it's not perfect, but it does appear as though our ability to manage that has led to some reductions. How do you view the fact that the state of California, through its initiative process, has passed Prop 64, and we, as we stand here today, we're in a different legal and political reality than we were last year? How does that affect your thinking and how you enforce public safety here, how you think about laws and their evolution? You know, obviously, if the state of California passed meth use, I think that would be highly problematic, obviously. And clearly, this is a new world for all of us. But how in your mind and in the minds of your law enforcement peers who are tasked with public safety of this issue and many others, how do you incorporate the passage of that and the idea of states' rights, the idea of, you know, local control? How do you think about that in light of this particular product, product being, you know, in a different category in California at least? I appreciate the federal issue. You know, how do you think about that?
Well, I think quite frankly, in California, Prop 64 was voted in by the citizens of the state of California. But in Prop 64, it allowed boards like this to take into account their constituency. And in Kern County, we did not vote for Prop 64. Fifty-three percent said no. So that's why that is in Prop 64, to allow this board to make that decision. Whether this, if this went to a ballot, I don't know what the citizen would vote. We're having a change in our country in a lot of different areas. Nobody wants to allow, make people post bail. We don't want to follow immigration laws. We don't want to follow marijuana laws or methamphetamine laws. So we are in a very tough time, but as a law enforcement sheriff, we will do the best that we can to follow the laws as they are written. If the federal government tomorrow legalizes marijuana or changes the schedule, I'll look at this totally differently. But they have not, and I don't know if there's an appetite to do that right now.
So for Prop 47, that did not pass in Kern County, the majority of voters--
Prop 64.
Right, but I'm thinking of a different proposition that's controversial and that law enforcement has been very opposed to, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the complexity of that, Donnie. But in Prop 47, Kern County did not vote, a majority for 47. They did in 57. Those are fine nuances, and I don't want to debate those today. But the fact that Kern County did not pass Prop 47, and yet it is fully implemented in Kern County and every, all the 58 counties in California as a matter of law, you know, do we have any ability to say, well, Kern County didn't vote for 47. We don't want 47. And clearly, the voters in Kern County didn't ask for 47.
The difference between those is in 47, there's no mechanism for this board to decide not to follow that law. Prop 64 does allow that, and that's why this, that's why we're having this meeting today.
Fair enough. So how should we think about, if this board bans, Donnie, how should this board think about the practical realities that we cannot stop the implementation of the transportation, the movement of this product? You know, how are we supposed to think about that very practical reality from a public safety standpoint?
Whether we regulate it or whether we ban it, isn't going to stop that. We know that. We already have a ban on all kinds of illegal drugs, and we have an opioid epidemic in this country. But that shouldn't change the way that we do business because we can't stop something, doesn't mean we should say that it's okay.
My last question, Donnie. We heard from our Public Works Director that we have five to six Code Compliance Officers. You know better than most the dire effect on your department and our public safety on the whole that has occurred because of our particular financial structure and the attempts we're making to solve that. You know, how do you think about those assertions made to this board about what we are capable of doing in our current capacity, the money that we have, the bodies that we have, the, our financial crisis, if you will, that's impacted you directly and all of us? You know, how do you think about what has been asserted to this board in terms of the practical reality of what we need to, you know, minimize the exposure to youth, education issues, all of these things that we've heard from mental health and other department heads that have said, you know, we have a lot of work to do here. This is a huge, huge, you know, undertaking, either way. You know, so how do you incorporate that into your reality?
Well, when people go into the drug business, it's to make money. Let's be honest. That's why people sell heroin. That's why they sell methamphetamine. And some people, that's why they sell marijuana, because it's a big money business. Because someone is willing to pay to play goes against every being in my body. This is, I'm not a drug dealer, and I don't care how much money they're willing to pay. I'm not willing to go down that road. Now, this board may be, and you may look at it totally different, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with us disagreeing. I disagree with some people out here, and they disagree with me. I'm okay with that. I still respect them. I still respect you for your opinion. But I think when you start trading off for money, I heard one of the radio personalities this morning saying, "Let's make some money." That's what drug dealers say. And I'm sorry, I'm not in this to make money.
Fair enough. Donnie, if there were no money here, if the county of Kern would not get one dime as a result of this, how should we think about, how do we pay for the regulation, the need, what you're going to need to continue to enforce the law, to keep this community safe? They trust you to do so, Donnie. You have a big job. I respect that sincerely. If there was no money at all, it appears to me from the presentation, we start out in the red from even this task force that needs to be created, the district attorney, resources that will need to be devoted to the actual crackdown of an emerging and growing industry that may remain illegal at the feds but continually a bigger industry in California. You know, if there's no, all money aside, and I think you make a very good argument from public safety perspective, but what do we do about that reality that we do, that the money is a very, the resources' capacity to move in a meaningful way on this appears to be, you know, far off?
Well, Supervisor Perez, what you've done is taken one little aspect out of law enforcement's job and saying, maybe we can't afford to do this. Well, we can't afford to do a lot of things for the last three years, but we still have done the best that we can. So I'm not willing to say, let's take this out. We can't afford to do this anymore, so we'll throw that out. What's next? What next can we not afford? This isn't a monetary issue with me. I'm not in this to make money. I'm not in this to do anything other than follow the law and what the will of the people is. I don't have a vote on this. You five, unfortunately, get to vote on this. I've just given you my opinion.
Donnie, hit you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Okay. See you now. Donnie, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Russell Judd, the CEO at Kern Medical. I want to share some statistics from a nearby state who has legalized the use of recreational marijuana, and that is Colorado. Since Colorado has legalized and is now fully integrated with the use of recreational marijuana, there has been an 80% increase in marijuana-related hospitalizations. There has been a 57% increase in marijuana-related emergency room visits, and there has been a 100% increase in traffic fatalities involving operators testing positive for marijuana. I don't know what the impact will be directly in the community, but I do know that if it is facilitated by your board, where marijuana becomes more accessible, where recreational use is recommended, is allowed, is regulated, there will be an increase of services that Kern Medical needs to provide. There's kind of a saying I used to hear when I was a teenager doing not-too-bright things. My mom would say, "Well, it's all fun and games till someone gets hurt." At Kern Medical, we're the ones who pick up the pieces when someone gets hurt. I have been in our trauma bays many, many times when a marijuana-related or other drug use situation arrives, and it's not any more fun and games. It is a significant impact to individuals. These are people who experience devastating illnesses and injuries because of their choice that they make. In one of my statistics from Colorado, that marijuana, since its legalization, it significantly moved up the chain of drugs. Since its legalization, marijuana accounted for the second-highest incidence of drug-related emergency room visits. If the recommendation from myself and from Kern Medical is that a ban be put in place, regulation will increase its accessibility and the opportunity for individuals to access marijuana. If the regulation decision is made, Kern Medical does request that there be additional funding provided to Kern Medical for what is determined to be an increased use of unfunded and uncompensated care that will be have to provided by Kern Medical because of this increased use of marijuana. That's the end of my comments, and we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Judd. Any questions? Supervisor Gleason?
Do you have any idea the cost of what you're talking about?
It's hard to predict. If the statistics follow, if we follow Colorado in those incidences, we probably have an additional 600 or 700 related emergency room visits because of the marijuana use. Emergency room visit is anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 per visit. When someone's in that significant of an injury or of an accident, you do that multiplication. You know, it's millions of dollars.
Supervisor Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here today, Mr. Judd. Were you given any opportunity to submit a request for funding in the ordinance or anything like that?
So we have visited many times with Mrs. Oviott. We recognize that there will be an opportunity, as policy is set by your board, for the distribution of funds to make that request during that policy decision in those distribution of funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judd. Appreciate it. Ms. Green? And I think this is our last department. Is that correct? Good morning.
Thank you. We were asked, the District Attorney's Office was, were asked by email late last week to address the issue of how a ban or regulating marijuana would impact our office. And that's the only thing that we are going to address today, was that specific question that was directed to us. Because it was so late in the week, I tasked that assignment, I gave that assignment to Assistant District Attorney Scott Spielman, and he'll be articulating the position of my department as to how either banning or regulating marijuana will impact the District Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Scott Spielman, Assistant District Attorney, and asked to let this board know the impacts. In general types of crimes, what we see with marijuana most recently is with the pot shops that we have, whether legal or illegal themselves, we do see an increase in robberies, tend to be armed robberies, some of them actually resulting in murder cases, which you would have had those also if it was, we've had them before out of apartments prior to the medicinal sales. But those are, that's reality is that we do see the pot shops our targets, magnets for armed robberies because, as I think it was the sheriff and others have alluded to, you have cash business with drugs there. Those are definitely targets for robbers. Another thing we see is impaired driving. About a year ago, we had one of the first strictly marijuana DUI murder cases where it was a man that was speeding who was impaired with marijuana, and he was a medicinal marijuana card holder, and that resulted in a second-degree murder conviction. I can tell you that it is difficult to prosecute marijuana cases. All drug cases are difficult to prosecute because they don't have the same evidence as you have with alcohol, where you have the empirical studies that can tell you what levels mean. You don't have that with, necessarily with drugs, including marijuana. And so it is difficult to prosecute. We primarily are using the testimony of the law enforcement officers on the field sobriety test about the impairment level. You also have the illegal grows that we occasionally see, and with those, you have, obviously, those are mundermaking, illegal operations that are often stealing water, using unregulated use of pesticides, and often have armed people that are guarding it with booby traps also. And whether or not there's a ban, regulation, we anticipate that those are still going to be existing for just the general prosecution of cases. Regarding strictly the ban or regulation and trying to determine the impact itself, one place to look, as was mentioned before, is Colorado and their experience. And I think actually some of the numbers that Mr. Judd just referred to can be found in, it was, in disclosure, this is, was a letter to the No on 64 campaign from the Denver DA. So this is a person that at that time was a Denver District Attorney. He's since termed out, but he wrote a letter describing some of the things that they saw after legalization of marijuana there. And I have six copies of that, if, one for the clerk and--
Thank you. Yeah, please provide it to the clerk.
And just some of the highlights out of that, Mr. Judd actually described essentially approximately 50% increase in related traffic deaths related to marijuana use and emergency room visits. And overall, the letter describes an increase in crime after legalization of marijuana, and that there was a significant increase in law enforcement attention to illegal marijuana after the legalization of, generally, of marijuana and illegal activity that continued. Regarding our department, the District Attorney's Office, and costs that we anticipate, whether it is a ban or regulation, because you're going to have to be doing enforcement either way, we would anticipate that in describing the illegal activities that are occurring right now, if you're looking at over 100 that exist right now, if that rate somewhat continued, whether it's a ban or regulation, we'd anticipate probably needing about three experienced prosecutors trying to enforce either the ban or the regulation, because you would expect that there will be extended litigation regarding a ban or regulation, because you're either going to have people that aren't allowed to operate, or they have restrictions that they don't agree with. And because it is a money enterprise, you could expect that you're going to have people that are on the outside that want to get in, and people that are already in that are not going to want to be regulated in the way that they are. And so there's different provisions that has been described to you that are going to be part of the recommendation that you've already heard, that will certainly, each one of the aspects of those regulations are fertile ground for litigation. So that's why we'd expect that it would probably take about three experienced prosecutors, and we did submit to the, to Ms. Lorelei about the, or Ms. Oviott, rather, about the anticipation of having three senior prosecutors to handle that enforcement. We'd expect that they would have heavy caseloads and that some of those would have extensive litigation. And that is essentially what we would expect out of whether it's a ban or regulation. We have probably already seen some increase in caseloads. As the sheriff described, over the past three years that you've had to deal with also, we've had to do more with less. So we'd have to continue to do that. Regarding this ban regulation, that's the impact that we would anticipate. If there are any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay, see you now. Thank you. Okay, now we will go to the remote testimony in Mojave, and my understanding is we have four or five speakers that are there. four or five speakers that are there.
Yes, good morning, Chairman. This is Brian Williams from your office. We have nine people in attendance today, five wish to speak.
Thank you. And we'll ask the speakers to please state and spell their name and observe our three-minute time limit.
Good morning, Board. My name is Dan Morsky. I'm a resident of Rosemond, California, and have been for the past six years.
Excuse me, Ms., would you, would you spell your last name, please?
Oh, yes, M-O-R-S-K-I.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I've watched Rosemond grow, oh, sorry. I've watched Rosemond grow as a town, and I've watched the influx of businesses into our town, and the one business that we seem to have the most of is the dispensaries. If you look at the per capita amount of dispensaries in our town compared to the other surrounding areas, we have a flush amount, about one per 1,000 people, which equates to about 18 shops. We've also had an increase of crime, we've had a loss of our police force, and a few other things that all add to the issues that we're facing in this town right now. The root of all of these issues is money. I know Sheriff Youngblood said he's not in the business of making money, but he is in the business of using money. And if he can use the pot shops as a way to gain revenue to help protect this community and this county, then I'm for it. If we can use these regulations to control the influx of businesses that do bring bad people with it, then I'm for it. Obviously, banning doesn't work. It's banned. We've had 10 come up in the last year since the moratorium was established. So, explain to me how passing further bans is going to prevent this industry from doing anything. I do notice that a lot of the specifications and the information that's shared by our department heads, a lot of that's contradicting information, and it's out there on the internet for you to see. The one thing most of them forgot to mention is that, yes, these places do have influxes of, arise in accidents and arise in crime, but they've also had dramatic rises in population. And what you're seeing is the influx of people from prohibitive states moving to these non-prohibitive states in order to enjoy a plant that they're not allowed to grow. Last point I'm going to make on this is that if you do decide to ban this industry, effectively you're turning a bunch of otherwise normally law-abiding citizens into criminals because they don't want to follow established guidelines for what's medicine and what's not set by the government. So, you know, if you guys want to turn a bunch of people into criminals, then that's all on you. I'm from Rosemond, I know there's a lot of people that are with me who couldn't make it today, who were for the banning, or for the regulation of it solely so that we can kind of get a handle on our town and reduce it down to two shops. The two shops that are vying for that position are both 100% legal based on guidelines established by the county previously before the moratorium. So, in my eyes, I see no reason. And if you want to use the not following federal laws, I think we should start with the sanctuary state stuff first before we start going with the marijuana.
Thank you.
The whole state's passed it.
Thank you, Mr. Morsky. Your time's expired. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Greg Wood. I am the chairman of the Rosemond Municipal Advisory Council, and thank you, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm on, here on behalf of speaking for our community to recommend option A, which is to ban marijuana in our, in our county. I've heard a lot of people speak in favor of it, I've heard a lot of people speak against it. I have been to many meetings over the past several years at the Armack, and I have seen the crowds of people in their standing room only, with better than 95% of the people in those meetings being against the legalization, the regulation, and against the pot shops in general in our community. You know, I see, I read the EIR, and I want to thank Lorelei for doing a great job on it. I mean, it was very detailed, very well put together, but it seems like you are focusing on the potential tax revenue, tax revenue that you do not currently have. And keep in mind that the people in this county voted against Prop 215 and 64, and banning the retail sales is not going to stop people from having it for their personal use. Prop 64 allows them to have it for their personal use. But by getting rid of these establishments in our community, it's going to bring businesses back. It's going to bring a family atmosphere back to our community. And when you look at your own report that says that Bakersfield, Delano, Maricopa, McFarland, Ridgecrest, Shafter, Taft, Tehachapi, and Wasco have banned, voted to ban. Tulare County is working on a moratorium, but Kings County, Enyo County, San Bernardino County have all voted to ban. And I don't know what their reasons were for banning, but obviously, they felt the potential tax revenue was not as important as what their people needed in their, in their counties and communities. So, I'm asking you, as a Board of Supervisors, to please consider the impact it's going to have on us and our communities, and I ask you to vote to ban, because you are going to have challenges in court regardless of what you do. But at least with Prop 64, you have the state backing you in, in allowing you to ban this. And if you vote to regulate, these shops are going to, are going to be fighting for survival, they're going to be regulate, they're going to be challenging you in court over this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is William Parkman. I'm the vice chair of the Rosemont Municipal Advisory Council. I have been a resident of Rosemond and Kern County for over 26 years. I'm retired and serving as the vice chair, as I mentioned. I see two distinct groups in our community that this particular thing is going to affect. The first is our seniors who are seeing the loss of a community that has a very unique character, relatively good safety and morality. The crime statistics are proof that the degradation of our community has already begun. Turning to the other group that I think that are going to be very seriously impacted by this, but yet they're not able to vote, but will be greatly affected, and these constituents are our children. Roughly a third to one-half of our children in Rosemond must walk to school and pass one or more of these establishments that are along their route. Most of these children are from low to middle-income families who struggle to deal with the ever cost of living. Our children are a lot smarter than we often give them credit for. They're always watching and always learning. Think I'm kidding? Remember the abject horror you felt when that child brought it out of the colorful expletive in front of company? Our children are expecting us to protect them. The cannabis sales will experience the same problems other businesses have, and that is growing their brand, expanding their market reach, protecting themselves from the criminal element, and seeking to make a profit. There will be those who will take these products, sell, maybe even giving them away to kids in the form of candy or other related media just to engrow that customer base. Voting for option A appears, in our opinion, to be the best for Rosemond. If not, when you adopt option B, we ask that you put in place the absolute strictest rules and regulations to protect our community, our families, and most especially, our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Chekley, that's C-H-E-C-K-L-E-Y, from Rosemond, California. I grew up in Rosemond. I moved away for many years when school worked, came back three years ago. Three years ago, when I drove into Rosemond again after 18 years, I seen multiple pot shops as I'm driving down Sierra Highway. I do not have any children, but I do have nieces who see it on a daily basis. I will also state that I am a medical marijuana user, and I fear that I would have to drive 45 minutes to an hour to go get my medication, that I cannot afford prescription medication. I also want to let you guys know that half of the people that go into these pot shops, or a good 75% of them, are your normal people, they're not your average stoner. I work in a hotel, I'm general manager of one, assistant of another. I have an education, I have a nonprofit, I'm a regular person of Rosemond. Rosemond needs this to stay, just two. All the rest of them can go. Please, help them go. I'm a firm believer that the two that are there need to be regulated, need to be in underestimable areas outside of town, and it just be basic. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Do we have any more speakers from Mojave, please?
Good morning, Mr. Scrivener and your board. My name is Glenda Willie. I have lived in this town of Mojave for 54 years and have volunteered in many, many organizations for 52 years. I am president of the Mojave Seniors and have been for eight years now, and we are a semi-active group. The one thing I'm hearing from our seniors, especially our widows and some of our gentlemen that live alone, the pot shops up in our little shopping area where we have State of Brothers and a furniture store are afraid to go shopping up there alone. They do not like the smell, and they do not like the type of environment that is hanging around the pot shops. So, they go to other towns to do their shopping. I am for Lorelei's A. I believe that they should be banned, and maybe some of our shops that have closed will come back. We have one gentleman in the shopping center that will be leaving at the end of the month because he received an eviction notice, and he's been there for years. So, I would like for the board to consider the ban for the town of Mojave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other speakers from Mojave?
Mr. Chairman, Board, that concludes our remote testimony here at Mojave.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Now, we'll go to Ridgecrest, and we have Denny Klein there from District One.
Yes, and we have one speaker here. Renee.
Thank you.
Chairman of the Board and the Board of Supervisors, I'm Renee Westa Lusk.
Could you please spell that, could you please spell out your last name, Renee?
Last name is W-E-S-T-A, and then there's a hyphen, and then it's Lusk, L-U-S-K. I have some questions, and I also have some opinions. One of my questions is Plan A or Plan B, are, is there any provision in either of those initiatives to pass local ordinances stricter than what is contained in Prop 64 that would further restrict the use by individuals of cannabis products and protect the public from exposure to the miserable intrusive side effects from the smoking of cannabis products, or the dangerous side effects from ingesting edible cannabis products? My background of why I'm asking these questions, I was exposed to the side effects from other persons smoking cannabis products when I was a senior in high school and have been running away from exposure ever since. I cannot breathe it, it makes me nauseated and can trigger asthma attacks in me. I want protection from persons who smoke cannabis products. My life is hard enough without having the smoke come into my house via my swamp cooler, which is the only cooling system I currently have in my house in the summer, and I also have been exposed when traveling on an Amtrak bus from Bakersfield to Los Angeles, forced to sit next to someone whose clothes were saturated with the smoke from marijuana. I did not have a mask with me, and it was all I could do to stop from choking on my coughing triggered by breathing this sickening odor. My asthma inhaler didn't help much, and the only thing I could do to stop my coughing was cover my mouth and nose with a Kleenex until the bus ride ended. What I am asking the supervisors for is more restrictions than what little restrictions Prop 64 has on where cannabis products can be smoked to protect the public. When they are out in public venues, on streets, parks, in their own home or yard, inside an enclosed space such as public transportation, bus, train, plane, or in a public or commercial building, I am begging the supervisors here to protect my clean air as well as the 85% other persons in this county who do not smoke this product. I am basically against Prop 64 and Plan B. What has been printed in either texts does not prove to me any of this regulation just won't keep the vast majority of cannabis in the underground black market. I think the taxes are way too high, all the jobs and the tax revenues, the county--
Ms. West, Ms. West, that, that concludes your time. Thank you so much for your testimony. And thank you, Mr. Klein. We'll now return to the chambers, and we'll open this up to public comment. And so, once again, please observe our three-minute time limit and spell your last name for us. And all questions that speakers ask are going to be answered by staff at the conclusion of the public comment period, so please proceed. Good morning.
Jefferson P.E.T.E.R.S.O.N. I am the Director of Programs at the Mission of Kern County, and I'm here on behalf of our Executive Director, Carlos Baldovinos, who wishes he could be here, but unfortunately, he's not able to be here, so he asked me to read this letter that he has previously sent to each of you dated September 25, 2017. Dear Board of Supervisors, the Mission of Kern County would like to state in the strongest terms possible that it opposes the legalization of the sale of marijuana in Kern County. As an organization that deals with homelessness, addiction, and mental illness on a daily basis, we feel that an increase in the ease of access to this drug will only exacerbate the drug problem and add to the homeless problem in our area. Other states that have legalized the recreational use of marijuana have seen an increase in homelessness, public consumption of drugs and alcohol, and other low-level criminal activity. If we look to Colorado as an example, where recreational use was approved in 2013, the state saw an increase of 8% in homelessness during 2014-15, and an additional increase of 13% in 2016. According to HUD, this is the largest spike of homelessness recorded during a period when the vast majority of other states saw a 17% decline. If you add that up, that's a swing of at least 30%. Along with the rise in homelessness, there was also a corresponding rise in criminal activity and public consumption, as noted above. It should be noted that the larger population centers of Portland, Oregon, and Seattle, Washington both appear to be trending in the same direction since the legalization of recreational use in their states. It is part of the mission of our organization to protect the population that we serve, and by extension, the community as a whole. We are requesting that you aid us in this by not legalizing the sale of marijuana within our community. Sincerely, Carlos Baldovinos, Executive Director of the Mission of Kern County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'll let you know, I'm going to extend the, the hearing until 12:30. Instead of 12, we had a lot of comments from our department heads, and so, just by the number of speakers that I see already, I want to give some extra time. So, sir with the cane, are you, you can't stand in line, is that, okay, you get to go after him, okay? go after him, okay? Anybody else who has that issue, raise your hand, let me know, and I'll put you in line, okay? Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Douglas McAfee, M.C.A.F.E.E., and I just want to start off by saying that I'm honored to be here, and I appreciate all the work that the Board of Supervisors is doing on this, on the subject, also counsel, and also Planning Development Services, and it was nice to see the board directors come and speak. That was, that was good, to get all their input. Hey, I'm with Bakersfield Normal, and we strongly supported legalization of marijuana for over twenty years, and I've been before the board many times, you know, different Board of Supervisors have been here, and I have a lot of respect for you, but in the past, I worked for the county. I worked for thirty years, I was a proud worker for the county for thirty years, and I worked for Planning Development Services, and on two different occasions, in ninety-seven and oh-four, three members of the boards, for some reason, put the pressure on me in Bakersfield Normal, they threatened my career. They threatened to fine me if I did not come to, if I came to a board meeting again and spoke my feelings. And I'm saying, there's a lot of stigma surrounding cannabis, and I think that one of the reasons why there is a stigma is because there's lies about it, but also because it's like, there's a big push from corporate monopolies to profit from pharmaceuticals and everything, to keep pot out, the cannabis out of our houses. You know, and the last meeting at the Planning Commission, I went to that, and one thing I did notice, it was very different, it seemed like a lot of people were there for, they were greedy, they're just about money, I want to make money, I want to make money. And it's like, this is not for me, it's not about money, it's about civil liberties, it's about like the First Amendment and freedom of speech, freedom to walk down the street without being harassed. Okay, in addition to that, I also want to say, my grandson, we went to school downtown, and I picked him up from school many times to walk him home, and when we go home, we go into this liquor store, it's right next to the school, there's a liquor store right across from there, from the school, and my grandson, I explained to him, hey, look, it's okay, because we're behind people's, you know, they don't look real, they look like they're, you know, alcoholics, but they got a can, a beer in their hand, they're walking out of the store, and I say, it's okay, it's okay, sweetheart, we don't have to be afraid of people because they look different, we don't have to be afraid. And so, I'm saying, I'm very happy, we were against Prop 64, but we were dealing with it, and I'm happy with the results. And so, I'm going to go home, I'm going to smoke a joint, kick back in my house, and be free. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask the, yeah, thank you so much. Go ahead, sir, and then we'll go back to the line. And if you, if you have trouble standing, if you come down and sit in the front row and raise your hand, I'll get you up right away. But, thank you, please proceed.
William G. Russell, Bakersfield. G. Russell, thank you very much for listening, and I hope you understand what I'm saying. I'm coming before you as a veteran, someone that has worked in Kern County for umpteen years, old friends with David, and I'm crippled now. This is a fairly recent development. I've had MS for many years, but it's gone secondary progressive. So marijuana is a very, very useful drug for me, and for many others, over four hundred thousand others that, you know, have or suffer the same condition. Allowing medical marijuana shops and the recreational use is good for the economy. It will increase your tax base. It will lower your cost for legal enforcement, law enforcement, prison expense, building of prisons. We've been fighting this thing since nineteen sixty and before. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope that you actually pass something that helps the county, that helps me. Don't push my medications out beyond my reach. I'm taking less opioids now because of smoking marijuana. It helps my pain, it helps me mentally, it allows me to think. I'm studying physics and mathematics as something to keep my mind active. I used to be in construction, I used to be an accountant and a controller. I helped build a lot of Bakersfield and Kern County, and I'm very, very proud of that. Overregulating seems like a liberal type of policy to me, that's what liberals like to do, is regulate. Come on, this is a conservative county, we don't overregulate. You have legal, social concerns and the costs, and you need more scientific studies. There are twenty-nine states that have approved medical marijuana. I have two of the conditions that are approved by all twenty-nine. We only need five more states, and we will have a two-thirds majority which will override federal law, which is incorrect. I wish you all a very good day, and thank you for hearing me, and I'm going home now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go to the left, and then we'll go to the right, we'll keep going back and forth, no, so my left, sorry, pardon me. That was confusing, I admit. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Robin Schiav, S-H-I-V-E, I am the Superintendent of Kernville Union School District up in the Lake Isabella area. It is Red Ribbon Week this week, how apropos that we're talking about this today, so I appreciate everybody else who is wearing red today. I am here representing the schools, as well as Dr. Mary Barlow, who wrote a letter to you, it's one of the first correspondence within your packet. In my, in my presentation, there is an assumption that there will be a regulation and also a ban for marijuana use in our area. And looking at the map, I'm seeing that there are some concentrated areas that seem that they are centralized more towards the school sites. Within our school site, within five hundred feet, there's marijuana growing, and we feel that that is something that the students are seeing, the students walk right past that every day, and it gives the wrong message to them. The result of the prescription THC that has developed over the last few years has increased in our own schools, seeing mental health problems, we've also had an increase in students who are hurting themselves, as well as suicide. Part of this is, we have also seen an increase in students bringing paraphernalia, as well as THC, onto our school grounds, and they're actually using them, they get it from their parents. And I'm finding that this is disturbing, also knowing that the, the use of marijuana is affecting the brain, and it causes them to have less of a motivation factor. One of our statistics that we use is California Healthy Kids Survey, in that we have also seen that this, there is an increase of students using marijuana, and it's also a gateway drug, which we have seen a lot of substance abuse in our small area, and we're trying to help our students to see the reality of what using drugs can do to their brain. We have also looked at what's been going on in Colorado, in that we found that in the three-year average, twelve percent increase of youth have been using marijuana, and I am concerned about our community, and looking at the use of drugs is, is hard to battle within a school district, and we're trying to get the kids to look more towards their careers and goals, and this is definitely defeating that purpose. It goes against education, it goes against what we know as helping our students to have developmental mindsets, and therefore, we are asking that you ban the use of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schiav. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Supervisor, Board, I appreciate the time to come in and weigh in on, on this subject. So through the hearings, my name is Gary Lowe from Bakersfield, L-O-W-E. What I've been hearing a lot of is talk about banning the use of marijuana, which is not going to happen, that's not what we're talking about, right? We're talking about banning commercial activity on marijuana within the county, the incorporated areas, so we understand that. I come to talk on behalf of a part of the industry that seems to have been overlooked to an extent, and that is that I represent a family of brands that are involved in the development and promotion of infused products. These are products that are different, excuse me, that are different from what we're talking about, these are not flour where people are smoking and getting high, these are, these are oils and rubs and topicals that help people with pain and inflammation, these are suppositories that help people when they have Crohn's disease, or lower GI issues that they need help with. People are using these products not to get high, they're using these products because they need help, and they want to feel better. And in a time when we're facing an opioid crisis in the United States that Kern County is not exempt from, and that when the Joint Commission themselves have come out and said that their approach to conservative care, using non-opioid pain management solutions, and using natural solutions to pain management, is the direction that we should be going as a country, this is something that needs to be addressed and considered when you make your decision. You're talking, we're talking about a part of the industry that matters, and your constituency that is going to be driving out of your county and across other counties and communities to find these medicines that are so important to them, like the individual that spoke on the, the man with the cane here with the multiple sclerosis. He's going to have to travel to go find medicine that should be available to him here. He shouldn't have to be driving two hundred, three hundred miles to do this. And I, and I hope that you consider this when you make your decision. It's not just about people wanting to go get high, there's more to it than that. And reasonable regulation will allow you to overcome a lot of the issues that I hear people talking about of why you should regulate. We want to reduce crime around the cannabis facilities, let's regulate them and ensure that they have security in place, that they have cameras, that they have guards, which I know is what Lorelize is putting forward on the Environmental Impact Report. Let's regulate it and get the bad players out of here. There's so many shops in Bakersfield, it's ridiculous, or there was, they're, they're being shut down now, and that's exactly what should happen, we should have a reasonable access to this product. The people of California, and whether the Kern County themselves, or even Bakersfield, said that they want cannabis in their communities, have voted, and they have, they have, they have told us that they don't think so bad as, as what is being put forward with the stigma and dogma. And I'll close with, although I understand where he's coming from, I believe our local and law enforcement should be concerned with our people and our codes, and not the federal law. This is where we live, not in Washington. Thank you very much.
Lorelize, Mr. Chairman, my name is Fuentes, Mike Fuentes, F-U-E-N-T-E-S. I stand before you as a patient and an advocate of cannabis. To regulate cannabis is the most important thing that we can do at this time. We are not regulating cannabis for this generation, we are regulating cannabis for the generations ahead. The generations that will be free to make their own choice. This generation and the next generation will hold positive for regulation. The taxes that are involved to help the roads and the schools are vital. The opioid epidemic is taking over America. Cannabis can be used as a, as a paradigm and a shift to what we currently see in America. We currently see an opioid epidemic. Cannabis, I believe, and many people believe, is, is the one way for the pharmaceutical companies to shift out of the opioids that are killing America. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisor Scribner, members of the board. I'm David Ghoh, G-H-O-H, Senior Pastor of the Garden Community Church, founder of Garden Pathways. The consensus of the most response, those most responsible for public safety and public health in our county, particularly our children, such as Chief Martin, Sheriff Youngblood, Mary Barlow, Kern County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kevin Silverberg, Supervisor of Panama Buena Vista School District, many of your department heads that spoke this morning, their consensus is that Option B puts children and youth at further risk. They are supported by the most recent formal studies conducted by national agencies and peer-reviewed journals. I refer to two articles in the Journal of the American Medical Association dated February 2017 and September 2016, along with a recent federal study published this month by the Rocky Mountain Consortium that details the impact of legalization in Washington and Colorado. These most recent studies are at odds with some of the conclusions of the earlier Cato study, that's September 2016, that the Planning Commission used as one of its two central research references in recommending Option B. I believe that was included in Appendix Q dot three. As Mr. Constantine pointed out, there is not a consensus, there is contradictory evidence by those that are studying this with the greatest sincerity and intent. I urge you that, given this lack of consensus, do not open the door for something that this county cannot shut it to in the future. We need, this definitely needs further study to know what is safe. In terms of the sanctity of houses of worship, before the modification presented this morning to Option B, in Option B as it stands, houses of worship were specifically left off of the sites in which marijuana dispensaries could not open within a half mile of. And churches could object to pot shops opening by arguing within the application of the conditional use permit, but at that point, there would be no legal basis for that argument. If there is a legal basis for that argument, then why not include those churches and houses of worship in Option B as it stands? And I know that many clergy, including Monsignor Craig Harrison, have directed letters towards you in this concern. I do believe that Option A does allow the twenty-eight existing retail medical dispensaries to continue to operate for a year. I believe that a compassionate solution could be found in this twelve-month window in which there could be better proposals for the safe sale of medical marijuana to those who have found it helpful and critical. I've heard at the Planning Commission how part of the regulatory limit, plan limits the amount of cannabis in consumables compared to the levels that led to poisoning in children in Colorado. I just wonder who has determined the safe amount of cannabis that can be ingested by a three-year-old?
Thank you, Pastor Ghoh.
Thank you very much.
Where's Mr. Esposito? Come, come forward, please. If you're, if you are, if you have some kind of a, a medical condition that is making it hard for you to stand, please come forward and sit in the front row, I will get you up right away. If you're in the front row and you want to speak, raise your hand. Mr. Esposito, please proceed, ma'am, and then we'll go to the front row and bring you up.
I have something to show you guys here, this is a flyer that we've handed out, hundreds of these. Out of respect for you and your staff, we have been instructing people to call the switchboard and not your personal offices, so that's listed on that letter, so I know that she mentioned there was three hundred calls. I just want to let you know, we, as an industry, have been letting people know, call the switchboard, don't bother them, where the opposition have given you your personal numbers. So just right off the top. Secondly, I'd like to address some of the things that Sheriff Youngblood had said. Number one, he said that collecting taxes with the cash might be a problem, just so you know that legal dispensaries have been paying sales taxes already just fine, it's working out just fine. They've also federally illegal, you get caught with it, they hand it right back to you, so it's no crime. Lastly, the message we need to be sending to kids is, you have to have ID, you have to go into a dispensary, and you need to be seen by a doctor. That's what we need to be telling kids, not go to the park and buy it, okay? So I'm going to read you a little thing that I wrote. In Stockton, there was a supervisor named Susan Eggman, who is, by the way, on a rampage in Sacramento. It's been said that things she did while supervisor was so extreme and liberal, left of the spectrum, that she basically led Stockton to bankruptcy, basically lit the fuse. There is an opposite side to that spectrum, to the right, okay? The ban is estimated to cost over two million, that doesn't include the lawsuits and special elections that are inevitable, it's going to happen. The other thing, the weed is going to be legal with a ban or regulate, the question is, are we going to check people's IDs or not? We're already losing at the pumps, we're already losing in property taxes, sales taxes, they're obscene. We stand with farmers, we stand with taxpayers. Speaking of taxpayers, we paid out the no's for this EIR. We've paid staff to study, and you've told them to study, and they've came back with their recommendation. The only opposition comes from WPR, their associates who can't even held up their end of the moral compass argument. The Planning Department has given you an... of the moral compass argument. The planning department has given you an open door in recommending Option B. Don't fall under pressure from political consultants. Don't light the fuse to our bankruptcy. Don't be that guy or gal. Vote Option B. A ban will surely continue to haunt us. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, please come forward. I was just going to say, I mean, if you don't take up the whole three minutes, we get more speakers, and so that would be appreciated. Ma'am, please proceed. State your name.
My name is Carol Edgeworth. E is an Echo, D is a Delta, G-E-W-O-R-T-H. Chairman and Board, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for what you do for us. I'm a registered dietitian and a retired health science teacher. I'm also a property owner in Rosemont, Mojave in California City. Cannabis, sativa, marijuana, pot, dope, weed, grass, no matter what you call it, it's one of the most abused psychoactive drugs, and its main ingredient changes the way information reaches and is acted upon the brain. Side effects of marijuana include distorted perceptions, sight, sound, time, touch, difficulties with thinking and problem-solving, memorizing a stream of numbers, loss of motor coordination, think driving, and the number one cause of accidents, loss of motor coordination, increased heart rate, feelings of anxiety and paranoia. Frequent use of marijuana may permanently affect the brain. Users may damage their short-term memory and lose the motivation to perform work at school or at work. Smoking marijuana also increases the risk of some cancers. Marijuana can act as a depressant. Users often feel sleepy and drowsy, think at the wheel, driving. Marijuana use can also make it difficult to judge distances and react quickly to signals and sounds on the road. Driving a car is extremely dangerous when under the influence of marijuana. Many people think that marijuana is not harmful. Marijuana used by teens has been found to cause permanent changes in the brain and increase risk of depression, suicide, and schizophrenia later in life. And by the way, as marijuana users build up tolerance, they may seek out other drugs to experience the high they first got. So in summary, this depressant, stimulant, and hallucinogen, I urge you, please, to consider the option of a ban.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Scribner, I'm going to make this really fast for you people. I'm so sorry.
Your name, please.
Nadine Escoante. I appreciate you guys working really hard on deciding if there's a ban, if there's not going to be a ban. As a mother, as a taxpayer, as a county, ex-county employee, I live in an area where there's five marijuana stores. My kids see them, but you want to know what my children see every single day, is when we go to one of the convenience stores around the house to get their soda, we see 30 to 40 kids from a local high school causing a ruckus. We don't see people at a weed store causing a ruckus. We don't see trash at the weed stores. We see it at the local store where we're getting soda, where we have a bunch of teenagers. I understand, as educators, as parents, we don't want our children taking toxic things in our bodies. I have a child that's 23, I have one that's 18. My 23-year-old is probably the most intelligent child that I've ever had, and she has given me statistics that I would say would put to shame some of your county employees. This child has learned how to understand weed, THC levels, to where she's become a vegetarian, she's much more healthier. When people are stating statistics, make sure that you're getting credible evidence, not statistics that are over 10 years old. We all know you're supposed to be having statistics that are five years and less. Make sure that people who are presenting information to you guys are informed and knowledgeable. Mr. Youngblood's comments of, "Shops deal with cash, so they're hiding money." I have a bow business, I make hair bows and sell petticoats. Do you know I deal in cash? But when I go pay my taxes, I can pay in cash, I can pay with my debit card. Do you know there's never been a robbery at my house? There's never been a murder? Why? Because it don't matter the form of payment that you're getting, as matters how you maintain your business. We need to look at the people who are presenting evidence to you guys and their credibility. We need to put aside our personal views and stick to the facts. You guys, good luck. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And I'm going to ask, I see several seniors in the lines, and just out of respect for them, I'm going to ask them to come down and sit in the front row so they can speak and don't have to stand in line. So if it's up to you, I'm just going to offer that. If you'd like to come forward, and I'll select you from the front row. And if you've already spoken and you're in the front row, I'd ask that you would move out of the front row, please. Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman and Board, good morning. I'm Wallace Martin, City Councilman from Ridgecrest, and I'm joining our town and our police force and our county sheriff, and also Kern County, who voted no on '64. We're all saying no to the constant march of mind-altering drugs. Now, despite all the talk, and all the best intentions, and all the beautiful slides, the fact is, is that this is simply not enforceable, period. Drugs, as we all know, can be found every 100 yards, but that's not enough. Colorado now has more pot shops than McDonald's and Starbucks combined. 322 Starbucks and 940 disgusting pot shops. They litter the landscape. And forget about all the money we're supposed to make, because the DEA clearly states that taxes do not exceed the cost of the negative impact. Large businesses in Colorado and Washington now have to hire out-of-state residents, get this, because their own people can't pass the drug test. Accidents and disciplinary problems up 155%. Absenteeism 180%. And all the money they promised for prevention, education, and treatment, nope, never materialized. And the Denver report shows that the city is losing convention business. The Colorado Attorney General states the black market is stronger than ever. Pot facilities are cash spots, and even the banks won't touch this racket. That should give you some kind of an idea. Pot shops are selling popcorn, brownies, cookies, and Cheetos laced with cannabis oil. Get this, I didn't know this. Edibles now comprise half of the Colorado market, and they contain three to 20 times the THC concentration recommended to get high. These dangerous treats have fallen in the hands of kids and infants and dogs and pets, and they're going to the hospital all over the place. Listen, proponents always tout Colorado about how great it is. Lies. The fact is that the crime stats have soared. Crime rates have risen 44%, and the murder rate hit a decade-high in 2015. Pot's destroying our young people. In Denver, 1/3 of all the kids now smoke pot. And how about that? What a great success story. It's more like a proven pathetic failure and a complete dumbing down of the entire once-beautiful state of Colorado. Now, in closing, I want to commend the staff for doing a very thorough report on this topic, but the fact is, is that it's the staff's job to research facts and present findings, but it's not their job to heavily orchestrate a vote one way or the other on this thing through rose-colored glasses. And for all the beautiful slides presented, I have over 350 pages of hardcore stats that dispute most of the data that's been presented here, from extremely reliable sources. So in closing, I urge you to please protect our children, protect our society, and vote to ban this in Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go here. No applause, please. I'm going to go here, the gentleman in the red shirt, and then I'll start pulling from the front row, and then we'll, and then once everyone from the front row has spoken, then I'll start with the lines again.
I have these, excuse me, I have these five for the...
Okay, please provide them to the clerk.
Well, go Dodgers or go Astros, right? One's going to win, same way about today.
Could you say your name, please, sir?
Oh, Tom Alexander, A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R. Forty-four years I've been involved in these marijuana wars, drug prevention, intervention, postvention, worked for teen challenge programs, ran teen challenge programs, saw the results of all types of drugs, including certainly THC marijuana. So you know where I stand, and I think all the people who are here to ask for banning really articulated their concerns very, very good. And these are real truthful concerns, so I don't have to repeat these. I just want to share with you that I believe that you supervisors are wise enough to make heads of what we should do about this. Twenty counties so far or have banned the marijuana cultivation and commercial use. And this includes all the counties around us, including Ventura County, which was quoted a lot today. And I also believe that Kern County will probably go this way, and the reason I believe that is because I know that you have knowledge, and you have intelligence, and you have wisdom, and that's why you are elected officials. Even though your commissioners recommended that you go ahead and go for Plan B, I believe that you don't want to become de facto drug dealers. I believe that you don't want to become scofflaws to federal laws. I believe that about each and every one of you, because I know you. I know you personally, or I know from your history. So in closing, I would like to commend you for being our supervisors, elected, and I also want to say that if you have a problem about this, perhaps the answer should be the 56% solution. And that 56% solution are the 56% people who said no to Proposition 64 from Kern County when we had to vote for that. So Chairman Zach Schribner, thank you. I'll rescind my time now, and God bless you. Jesus loves each and every one of you. Yeah, I'm that crosswalker that prays for you guys every Monday or Tuesday, so God bless you, huh?
Thank you. Okay, we'll start right here, ma'am. Please come forward, and then we'll move down the line. Thank you.
My name is Sherri Ott, O-T-T. I've been a resident of Mojave since 1959, and yes, I'm a senior. I was five when we moved there. You do the math. I've been a board member of the Mojave Unified School District for eight years. I am now retired, but I have seen such a decline in the residents of Mojave just in the last 10 years. I saw it first and really became aware of it when I was on the school board and saw what our young people endure in the families. And so many of our young students have parents that are involved in drugs or marijuana use or whatever reason, and they don't even care for their children. And not only is that a bad example for the student, but as concerned people in the community and a school board that cares for these students and teachers that care, we want to do anything we can to make it better for them. What's enacted right now with adults and their choices is those are their choices, but we can step in and make it easier for our young people to make right choices. I could cite a lot of statistics, but everybody else has, who likes statistics anyhow. So I'll just close and just ask you to pray about it. I'm a Bible thumper, too. And just ask your conscience what you need to do. Do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Serenity Hansford. That's H-A-N-S-F-O-R-D. I am here in support of regulation of marijuana. So there's this war on drugs, thinking that you can fight a sickness with violence and silence, just lock them up if they break the law. Marijuana, I'm going to say a couple of things that marijuana helps. It helps veterans from suffering from PTSD. If we care about our veterans so much, why are we taking away their medication? If you know somebody with Parkinson's disease, it's known to soothe tremors. It can help people with epileptic seizures. From the last town hall meeting I was at, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the people who have lost loved ones due to drugs. I'm not asking for regulation in an attempt to invalidate the pain that they have endured. Marijuana, although, did not cause it. The pain and the anger and the fear is being misdirected. There are people in the prison system who are being punished for trying to find a solution to a problem they may not even be aware of, and that is a result of this town failing them. In mental health, in physical health, I am 27 years old with degenerative disc disease, and this is my second time speaking at a town hall meeting, and it is very nerve-wracking. But I am fighting for my medication, because I too, I heard someone say that they take less opiates when they smoke medical marijuana. I have not had any opiates today. I haven't had any in four days, and that is because of the access to medical marijuana. If Kern County bans marijuana, that doesn't mean it's going to go away. I remind you, 1993, I believe, 19, I don't know the date, I'm too nervous, but prohibition is what I'm speaking about, is when they tried to make alcohol illegal. That did not work, it brought the mafia. And that doesn't mean it's going to go away, it will remain, it will become more dangerous. People will buy it off the streets. It's not going to mean people are going to stop buying it. To kids, if it's illegal, it'll be more enticing. I hear people saying that they walk their kids to school, and they can smell it, and it bothers them, and I'm just thinking, why doesn't it bother them that they can smell alcohol? There's a lot more bars, a lot more places you can buy booze, which has no health benefits, but medical marijuana does have health benefits, and anything can be abused. Anything can be abused. People have died from drinking energy drinks. I ask you to please think about regulating medical marijuana, because I don't know what I'm going to do, is what I'm going to do is I'm going to get addicted to the narcotics that are legal, and then I'm going to have to go through withdrawals, and then that's what's going to cause me to give up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker seated, please.
Good morning. Good morning. God bless you all, in the name of Jesus Christ. My name is Ralph Waldo Emerson Anthony. I know each one of you, been living in this county since '48. Your sign says, "In God we trust." Underneath it says, "E Pluribus Unum." It's not "In Pot We Trust," it's not "E Cannabis Unum." Ban whatever name you want to call marijuana, weed, whatever. And I'm speaking from a personal involvement with this as a teenager, also as a pastor of a church, assistant pastor, and talking with different entities in all aspects of this. Nothing good come out. There's a rush of different economies, different businesses that want to get started. When NAFTA opened the borders from Canada to Mexico, the largest commodities to come across was drugs and weapons. Is that right? And as a result, the community that's most open to the most negative aspects of development comes out of the poor communities in which we serve. Gentlemen, brothers, ladies, ban that stuff.
Thank you. And now we'll start right here, the gentleman seated in the first row, you were the next in line, and so come forward, and then we'll go to this side, and then back and forth. And once again, if you are having trouble standing for any reason, please come forward, sit in the front row, and I'll get you right up. Please proceed.
Thank you, Board. My name is David Abasi. I'm with the Central Valley Cannabis Association. David Abasi, A-B-B-A-S-I. We are a group of industry and business professionals who adhere to higher standards. We self-regulate, and we have good business practices. I'm here today to talk about regulations. I'm here today to talk about regulations. As the sheriff had mentioned, we have a problem with crime, and we can thank him for that. In 2006, he didn't want to regulate something that was already tightly controlled and under control. He wanted nothing to do with it, apparently, and now we have the situation we have now with this lawlessness and the 2009 ordinance. So again, we can thank Mr. Youngblood for that. Prop 64 did not pass here with 53%, not 93%, 53. And we also had a campaign here that might have affected that and made it to where it didn't pass because we were against it as well at first. The opioid epidemic we have with opioids, they are being reduced with cannabis use. The research has been done. And there has been a lot of research done in the past 15 years, so we're talking about, you know, more recent information, not the outdated stuff you may have heard earlier today. For example, science has been saying that according to the National Health and Traffic Safety Administration study in 2015, that traffic in, traffic collisions states that legalized medical marijuana actually have seen a drop in traffic-related deaths. Also, babies need cannabis, and it says here that in '92, chemist Raphael Machulam discovered the endocannabinoid system. And what this basically does is facilitates the neurochemical crosstalk between embryo and the mother, and it acts as guides for the fetal neural stem cell proliferation and differentiation. Essentially, this helps the baby's brain allocate resources to the right places. And also teen use. Teen use has dropped. Teen use, 12 to 15, 12 to 17-year-olds, the teen use has dropped as a result of regulations as well. So the studies show clearly that there is less car accidents, teen use, and other things that show that cannabis is beneficial. Banks, we have banking. We actually have banking now through third-party credit unions and straight major banks. Taxes, you can tax medical marijuana. It's state sales tax exempt, but the county or city can put a special tax on it. And in conclusion, you know, I thought we were here because we're looking at this seriously and talking about regulations seriously, not like last time where you guys had us come here, attend the workshops, and then later banned it, and then banned it again. So obviously, this isn't going to be another ban because I'm thinking you guys got it by now and not going to fool us. We were successful with the referendums and challenges, and should the county ignore the will of the people, their own EIR, and go against the Supreme Court, we are ready to respond with a legal challenge. Simultaneously, we will gather signatures-
Thank you, sir.
... and have our own measure on the ballot. Thank you very much for your consideration time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll go here. That was, that was good. We'll go here, and then I'll start pulling from the front row, and then we'll go back over to Mr. Godinez. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bethany Linder, L-I-N-D-E-R. I'm one of those that originally didn't like marijuana on there until recently I came and found out that I unfortunately have Huntington's disease. I now do take medical marijuana. Today, I'm not on it because I wanted to show you guys how actually bad it can be for me if I don't get it. I'm also a Bible thumper, and I do believe in God, and I've gone to church since I was born, and I've been in Kern County since I've been born. My husband and I went to Oklahoma for a little while, but then we came back, back to California, to Kern County because this is our home. I don't want to leave, but my disease continue, will continue to get worse and worse, and I don't want to be on Vicodin, opioids, and all these other drugs that are hurting me more than helping me. I can't, when I'm on the medication from the doctors, that the doctors prescribe, like Kepr that I'm on now, it doesn't do anything. I can't make my kids dinner, my husband dinner anymore, but when I do take medical marijuana, I am able to stand up and get into the kitchen and do their dinner and make, fold their laundry. Huntington's disease is a fatal genetic disorder that causes the progressive breakdown of nerve cells in the brain, and it also affects mental parts of my brain. I will have depression, suicidal thoughts, not from marijuana. Marijuana does not make me feel that way. In fact, it's the total opposite. Marijuana helps me be able to cope with my disease in order to do this. So I come before you and just please, thank you for listening to us and thank you for putting that, sorry, putting, listening to all of us and listening to the studies and everything and hearing our voices one more time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And let's go first, first seat in the front row, and then we'll, we'll go right down the line.
My name's Chelsea Parker. Oh, I'm short, sorry. I just wanted to say that I agree with regulating. Cannabis has been extremely helpful for me. I suffered from migraines just about daily, bad migraines, couldn't hardly go on with my day. And I haven't had a migraine since February when I started using cannabis. When I got my card, I talked to a doctor, I did everything that I was supposed to do to be able to use it so that I could try something different because I was taking Vicodin all the time and I was taking Norco's all the time for my pain. I also have spinal stenosis. I've got back issues. It helps with my anxiety and my depression, and I don't know what I would do if I had to travel to go get my medication. That would be an excess stressor on me. That would cause me more anxiety. I have anxiety when I drive. It's going to make it worse. It's, it gives me a lot more problems on top of the problems I'm already trying to solve with cannabis. So I really do appreciate you guys doing all the work to get this going. I just hope that you guys choose to regulate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deanna Marshall. M-A-R-S-H-A-L-L. I am a medical marijuana patient, and I have been since I rolled my car down the canyon in 2012, and I ended up on life support. I didn't eat for eight weeks, and a friend of mine came over and she said, "I know you don't smoke, but you're going to smoke this with me." And I was able to eat that day. Since then, I've had two strokes, and I survived them. I'm a good parent. My kids don't go without, and I am a medical marijuana patient. I survived my strokes due to the fact that I used medical marijuana. I was able to regain my speech, as you can tell. I lost complete speech. I lost the use of my entire left side of my body. As you can see, I'm standing here before you today. I have a herniated disc in my back that prevents me from being able to stand long amounts of times or sit or lay, so you can imagine my day. But with medical marijuana, with topicals, with being able to smoke it, with being able to ingest it, I'm able to sleep. I don't take Norco. I don't take Methadone, and those were all prescribed to me prior to me using medical marijuana. And I no longer have to use those drugs. I have seizures now due to the strokes. I am on one of the lowest doses of seizure medication because I use medical marijuana and CBD. I know what it does for cancer patients. I've seen it firsthand. Please, don't ban this because if you do, I won't be able to get the meds I need to be the parent I need to be. And my children deserve that, you know? And everyone keeps talking about Kern County didn't pass it because we didn't want it to be legal recreationally. We wanted it to be legal only medicinally, and I feel that it should be used medicinally only. That is my own personal preference, my own personal opinion, and please, consider the patients. Consider the ones that, I know a quadriplegic, that he wasn't on any medication because he used medicinal marijuana, and he lived 37 years almost in a chair. That's unheard of. Please do your research on that. They only live usually 10 years in a chair. He lived almost 37 years due to medical marijuana. I won't take up any more of your time. Please don't ban it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And then we'll go to Mr. Godinez.
Mr. Chairman and supervisors, thank you for an opportunity to speak with you this morning. I had a number of notes, but I'm going to set these aside for just a moment. It seems to me from what I've heard over the last, I'm sorry, Cynthia Giumara, G-I-U-M-A-R-R-A. It seems to me that what I've heard over the last number of minutes is that there's a great concern about the medical need for marijuana in our community. The last thing I would want to see happen is that people who need legitimate medical care are denied that medical care. It's my understanding that under option A, you have the period of time of 12 months, I believe it is, to make some decisions and make some headway on how we're going to further accommodate people with legitimate medical need for marijuana. So I don't want to deny medical need and people that need medical care. That's not what this is about, in my opinion. Now, I, you've heard a lot of statistics, and I was going to share some with you this morning as well, particularly from Colorado that was most readily available. I looked at a number of documents as I was preparing to speak this morning, but I don't want to see things happen in our state or our county that we saw in Colorado or not to mention Washington or Oregon. We saw statistics where the increase in traffic accidents was more than double. Emergency room care in Colorado in 2016 had, had gone from what it was a few years before from about 6,06300 cases of emergency, emergency room care to the first nine months of 2016, where it was almost 11,000 cases of medical emergency because of marijuana. Now, bear in mind, I'm not talking about legitimate medical use. That's not the point here. In Colorado, some of the other information that I looked at showed that there had been an increase with traffic interdictions of marijuana going out of the state. It was destined to go to 36 other states that did not have marijuana legalized in those states. Male-wise, it was, there were interdictions in male increased by 844% during the years of 19, of 2009 to 2012. So, and again, this is not about medical need. This is about marijuana use and marijuana trafficking, if you will. I think that expanding the sale and cultivation is really, it's a foolish thing to do. We've heard the old adage, and with all due respect, stupidity is doing the same thing over again and expecting a different result. In, in our county, if we do the same things that we've seen happen in Colorado and other states, we're going to get the same result. It's going to, it's the same thing, the same result. So I know that you all have a deep love for our county, for our citizens, citizens in our community, and it is my fervent prayer, actually, for all of you, that you will take time after the hearing to really consider what you've heard this morning, bearing in mind the need for medical care, bearing that in mind because it is a significant need that people have, and I appreciate that, but that you're going to let the love you have for this community abound in you with knowledge and depth of insight so that you're going to know and discern what is best for the people that you care about and the people that elected you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Shrivner, Board members and staff. My name is Gabriel Godinez, G-O-D-I-N-Z. I'm with Godinez Law. I want to just bring to light, I've heard a lot about the storefronts and collectives. One thing I think should not be forgotten, if the Board votes for a ban, there is a sunset clause on the 28 collectives that are currently approved and are deemed legal prior to the moratorium. That's going to be very problematic for the Board and for the county for multiple reasons. One, they would still be able to operate then, but they will be under the state guidelines. And then how will they continue? Whether there's a legitimate, a very compelling legal, non-conforming use argument that the county is going to have to address when it gets close to the year in which they're supposed to fade out. I believe there is a compelling argument and case law out there that will establish and keep these collectives opens to the challenge of a ban. What does a regulation do? It limits the number that we have. The work that's been done on the environmental impact report looks to regulate from seed to sale. This is not just about storefronts. You have transportation, cultivation, quality control, quality control, and the safety mechanisms that are placed in the ordinance as recommended by staff in the environmental impact report. So say the county, say you guys go with a ban. I anticipate there being a counter-ballot measure going on the ballot that would use the very detailed, wonderful information that was in the environmental impact report in order to create a different ordinance for the people to vote on. In the environmental impact report, it allows for 5 million square feet of indoor grow. The proposal in the, in the B option allows for two. Now, if I were to draft a competing ordinance, I would go with the recommendations in the environmental impact report. The Board has an opportunity here to take the bull by the horns, control its destiny, adhere to the will of the people on both sides. We can accomplish this together. Going for a ban is going to expose, going for regulation is going to expose, you can have less exposure on the regulation side. You can have more cooperation from the state as well to enforce the regulations. We go for a ban, we're the Lone Ranger. We got to come up with those fines. How are we going to do it? We haven't heard how. We've learned what the costs are, but this is not about cost. This is not about money. This is not about taxes. This is about what are we going to do as a community for our community? What are we going to do for our community, each and every one of you? I ask that each of you give serious deliberation to what your decision is going to be today, pray about it, and do what's right. Do, do not bend to political, to the party line. Do not bend to special interest. Look in yourself. Look at the work that's been done. The recommendations, regulation is fair, it's reasonable, and it's needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll ask for the speakers to please keep their statement as brief as they can. This hearing is going to close at 12:30. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Oscar Anthony, and we want to thank you for allowing us to give a chance to express our views about this important issue. I live in Supervisor Perez's district. I want to commend all the reports, a lot of facts that have been issued, and my position is that you ban recreational marijuana dispensers as well as manufacturing. And I don't have a written testimony, but I have a personal testimony. For those who feel that this is a positive thing, it's a negative thing. You perhaps may be able to regulate laws, but you cannot regulate behavior. We're not here to say no to medical marijuana, but recreational is not a good decision. I remember when I was a teenager using marijuana, and I used to be a carpenter, thought I can work, under the influence of smoking marijuana. And I almost fell off a building because I became so seduced by the idea of using a hammer and almost fell off a building. Marijuana is not a positive thing. We have a young man who was a 4.0 GPA in high school, and we used to counsel him in our church not to use marijuana, and he resisted because he became addictive to the feeling, perhaps not the drug, but the feeling. And that young man is now homeless and is a mental case, and you can see him today crossing Union Avenue and California Avenue. The issue is, we know that you have a tremendous decision to make in terms of generating tax dollars, but I believe you're going to have far more reaching impact on our children if you allow this to be used recreationally. Again, look at the medical use of it, but don't allow it to be used recreationally because you'll be part of the decline of our community. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Ben Ilenberg, E-I-L-E-N-B-E-R-G. I'm a lawyer. I'm here on behalf of a number of the corporate interests that want to come to Kern if Kern votes to regulate. As a lawyer, I've actually worked both sides of this issue. I also worked for Mental Health Court for three and a half years. I've helped municipalities shut down unpermitted operations. I've helped permitted operations work with municipalities. I actually agree with several of the things Sheriff Youngblood said. Sheriff Youngblood said, "We're, today's vote will not change if marijuana happens in Kern or not." That's not what today's vote is about. A ban doesn't get rid of marijuana. He said that we're still going to have to shut down the unpermitted operations. That's true. The unpermitted operations will happen whether there is a ban or there is regulation. The question that faces the Board is whether you want allies in that fight against the unpermitted operations, the allies that you gain. You gain the state as an ally, not just monetarily, but also in the regulatory agencies. You get the private actors who are the good actors, the permitted actors, who are working with the county to help shut down the unpermitted operations. with the county to help shut down the unpermitted operations. You also admittedly, and it isn't the primary focus, but it sure is a focus, you get the funds from all of the different sources that Ms. Oviott detailed, as well as the increased tax basis from the businesses in town that aren't cannabis-related but are providing support services to those cannabis businesses that will expand their businesses. So, for example, real estate agents, attorneys, accountants, restaurants, they'll have more patrons in the areas. The other thing that I will say is this, by regulating, you bring the industry that's here in Kern into the regulatory framework that's not just within Kern, but within the state. It means that anything that is sold through the permitted dispensaries here in Kern has gone through the entire state process, which includes the consumer testing through licensed laboratories that are checking to make sure that any product that is sold is good, is pure, is not going to...
Thank you.
Oh. Oh. Is not going to be corrupted with anything, any outside pesticides, anything else. On the other hand, if we enact the ban, the only shops that will be in town will be unregulated, which means that what is being sold, as we all admit, will still continue to happen, will not be safety tested in the same way that it will be if we regulate. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Gustavo Aguirre, A-G-U-I-R-R-E. Since March this year, my organization and other organizations, together with community groups, we have been submitting comments to the EIR. The first option being banning, as we conceived banning is wiping those out, which eventually, with meetings with Lorelei and her staff, including last week's, a two-hour-long meeting in the communities with Mr. Craig explaining how it works. And I voted against Prop 64 at the state, and I don't like to see that. I'm not supporting the industry, but based on information and based on the background of the counties being, not being successfully legally implementing regulations, the residents that we work with, together with our organizations, we are recommending for you to regulate, to implement Plan B, because like in Rexland, there are five dispensaries right now. I live in East Bakers, in Isles. The last few months, I've seen like five. If you drive on Edison, I've seen a couple of those, like in the last month or so. And those are county. And I don't see how the county is going to implement a banning on those plus-10 businesses that exist up there. Yes, I'm very concerned about my kids. Yes, I'm very concerned about my neighborhood, but I don't see a realistic implementation of Plan A. So we, as the community, we believe that regulating it, it will come up from plus-10 to only two in those neighborhoods. So we really strongly ask you to do that. The sheriff said that, you know, they are doing their best. Their best is not being enough up to now because it's been increasing. The deficit that the county have, I think, if I'm correct, deficit on 19 million, it will be to 21 million if the task force is implemented. It looks like it's not going to be enough. So we really encourage the county, the supervisors, to implement something that is going to prevail legally moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Brust. I am the co-founder of Bakersfield Residents Against Pot Shops, and I live in District Five. The board of supervisors, number one job is to ensure public safety and regulating pot doesn't make our county safer. The voters of Kern County already spoke a year ago and voted Prop 64 down with nearly 55% voting to ban pot. Almost every city in Kern County, as we have heard today, has banned pot. Two of the letters submitted to the county are of particular interest, one which our district attorney has already spoken about, which was the Denver District Attorney Office. It's page 212 in your packet, states that traffic-related marijuana deaths have increased in Colorado by 48% since 2013. NER visits due to pot have gone up 49%. Aurora, Colorado homicide rates has more than doubled since 2015, and Denver's crime rate is up 44%. This comes directly from the Denver DA's office. This is not from a news source. It's not from Breitbart, someplace like that. This is not fake news. The other letter comes from the famous Greenfield Walking Group, a group of ladies in the 5th District that have fought and continue to fight drug dealers in their neighborhood. These ladies are in the trenches, and they oppose a plan to regulate, and even the Center for Race, Poverty, and the Environment is against the regulation. They know these shops will have horrible effects in disadvantaged communities in our district, District Five. The county's cannabis EIR, in fact, doesn't even address the effect on the disadvantaged in our community. While Lorelei has done a wonderful job, I want to commend her on adding the modification A to Plan B. The county ordinance, distance to rehab, sober living facilities, churches, mental health clinics are ignored, except for the new option. Proposed money set aside for education, but there's none for treatment. Who will vote for the tax? The county has long history of not voting for taxes, and marijuana industry won't want to see a tax. In Ridgecrest, the Navy is one of the largest employers in Kern County and has a zero-tolerance policy for pot and random drug tests. And how will they feel about this ordinance? What will Trump and Sessions do if we have a base realignment? What will happen with the loss of jobs in eastern Kern? The ordinance hasn't even considered safety measures like mandatory ID swipes, double doors for entry, free access to video surveillance at shops for law enforcement. County departments like the Sheriff's Department that will receive the most funds are against Plan B. Most of the state policies and bills haven't even been passed. We don't even know what enforcement will look like. Will we have an office in Kern County like ABC does? We don't know that because the county hasn't done their job. I mean, the state hasn't done their job. With so many issues, the most prudent thing to do is wait to see what happens. Let's see what the state does. Use the knowledge other counties will struggle through, and if indeed, revisit our stance on marijuana. Today, no one can answer my questions, but in the future, that may change. I stand here today willing to help our county in any way I can, but Plan A, the ban, is the safest place...
Thank you, Mr. Brust.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Patricia Leal, L-E-A-L, and I'm here on behalf of Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. And as Gustavo Aguirre mentioned, we are a group of folks working with community residents in Rexland Acres, Lamont, Weed Patch. And just to clarify the comment just mentioned before, we've been monitoring this process for the marijuana dispensaries since November and December of last year to ensure that there is some type of form of regulation. So yes, our comment letters that we submitted at the beginning were in favor of banning because there was no option B or regulation option to ensure that these dispensaries didn't just pop up anywhere in our community. So yes, we start with banning, but now, as we've been in meeting with Lorelei, with community residents in Rexland Acres, we've come to an agreement that we want to make sure that our communities do not continue to have a disproportionate access to different dispensaries within the community. So part of my comments today is, we've been working a lot with the community of Rexland Acres. Unfortunately, right now, there's five illegal dispensaries in the community where students and youth and parents, concerned parents, have to walk through their communities in a one-mile radius, which is a county island community. Option B, what it's doing is ensuring that there's only two dispensaries within that district boundary map that was shown to us. So part of our advocacy today is to ensure that there's not an overconcentration of dispensaries, but at the same time that there is a regulation. Unfortunately, Kern County has been banning dispensaries and the use of marijuana dispensaries, but it has been very unsuccessful, which is why since December of last year, we came up here, we mentioned how we've been trying to work with code enforcement to ensure that they shut down these dispensaries, yet there has been no success because of the same reasons that there's no policy in regards to regulation or implementation. So option A, how would option A ensure that these type of pop-ups of dispensaries in our communities stop, which is why I'm here on behalf of the Rexland Acres community residents to bring this up, this concern? At the end of the day, this is not about profit. It's in regards to ensuring that our communities and our students and our youth have access to a safe and healthy community. So please take that into account when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, if you're having trouble standing, a lot of you have been setting up a long time, please come down to the front row. I'll get you up right away. Please proceed.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, thanks for all you do. My name is Wendell Vinson, V-I-N-S-O-N. I've served as a senior pastor of Canyon Hills Assembly God Church for the past 34 years. We're a multi-campus church with six of our eight central California campuses here in Kern County. I'm asking you to please vote in favor of the ban on marijuana dispensaries and commercial cultivation. As a church, our children and student ministry staff work weekly with hundreds of children and students throughout this county. We have a college and young adult ministry that serves hundreds of college students each week. Because of this, we're engaged in ways that allow us to see firsthand the challenges each of these students face and the myriad of snares they're forced to navigate during their respective stages of their young lives. In a culture struggling to find its way, I think all of us could agree that it's getting more, not less, complex and confusing. Sadly, every single day, we're in a position of helping individuals and families pick up the pieces of their broken lives through the numerous recovery programs that our church offers. More often than not, the utter devastation in their lives has come as a direct result of addiction. Too often, the path that led them to their brokenness began with marijuana. Why in the world would we, as a county, want to align ourselves, endorse, or even profit from something that causes such harm to both our people and our community? I've heard the arguments. We all know that ultimately, no one who feels that they need medicinal marijuana is going to be prevented from receiving it. This is about one thing, whether or not our county is getting into the pot business. It's a sleazy business. It degrades the fabric of our community. It sets our young people on a path that they will regret, from which some will never recover. For all the money that some clamor to get their hands on, the unintended consequences and cost are simply way too high. We have responsibility, it's a responsibility first and foremost, to protect our community. We have a responsibility to nurture what is good and helpful, to do what is in the long-term best interest of our children, youth, and families. I certainly understand that beyond the ban, we need to find ways to enforce the ban. And I'm respectfully asking you to vote to ban marijuana dispensaries and commercial cultivation in Kern County. Thank you very much, supervisor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Timothy Blakely, B-L-A-K-E-L-E-Y. I'm the Public Relations Manager for Antelope Valley Diamond Collective, and we are also the first members of a Chamber of Commerce. We are members of the Rosemond Chamber of Commerce. Maybe for a little bit different perspective than what most of the people have been telling you today, I can tell you from an actual point-of-view perspective what we've been We regularly attend the Antelope Valley Relay for Life as the Green Warriors, and we have been for some time. We support many patients in our community, as well as the community programs. We're one of the very few, if not only, chamber members that actually shows up to do community cleaning projects. We donate to our community, and we also donate lots of the life-saving RSO medicine that some of the patients have talked to you about. It's the actual medicine, not the smoking. We've donated to our amphitheater in the community to try and help bring commerce. We've tried to change the image, and we want to do so. So I'm going to surrender the time in a minute, but we do do the things that you guys want, and we are here. We're maybe not as public because it has been a struggle for cannabis companies to publicly do what, I guess, normal people do. We get labeled by horrible names in our local newspapers and things, but I can tell you, we represent over 200 patients a day. And if we can't support them, they will have to go as far as downtown Los Angeles. We are the closest location to both Los Angeles and Kern County patients. So there's a lot of things to be lost here, but there are also a lot of things to be gained. We do want to help the community. We do want to do the things that were addressed, and I want to present an open invitation to the community members of Kern and any member of Rosemond especially, who has concerns about this, or maybe would like to open up with us and help us help our communities and do more. So we would like to leave you with extending the open-door policy and saying that we're here for you, we will help you in any way we can, and we're not the bad people that a lot of you think are coming, and they are out there and regulating. We'll stop the bad people so that we can do more good works in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jeffrey Weinstein, W-E-I-N-S-T-E-I-N. I'm Superintendent of Schools for Southern Kern Unified School District in the areas of Willow Springs and Rosemond, California. We have had an influx, as you heard from the testimonies, remote testimonies, of marijuana dispensaries in our community. I'm here to tell you the impact that I have seen and my Board of Education has seen on the youth. We serve 3,700 students in our area. The most and majority impact is from the increased presence, increased availability, and increased circulation. In our community also translates to increased availability to our students. We have seen an eight-time suspension rate increase in cannabis usage, as well as over 900 students at my TMS middle school, which is 11, 12, and 13-year-olds. We see an 83% increase in marijuana incidences at that level. The most alarming thing that we have seen in Rosemond, California, is that these incidences are not from smoking marijuana. These incidences are with our edibles and also with the oils that they get from their parents and people who are buying these legally. Chronic candy is something that has permitted my middle school to be one of the biggest things that we have that suffers from absenteeism and also on low test scores. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned is that in Rosemond, California, most of the people that are being served by the Rosemond, California dispensaries live in the Antelope Valley, which encompasses a half a million people, but most of those people are in LA County, and they come north to Rosemond, California to buy their medical marijuana. My Board of Education and I, our number-one fiduciary responsibility is to keep our kids safe. Educate, but the number-one thing is to keep our kids safe. The message that you send by legalizing or regulating marijuana in Rosemond, California, or any other incorporated areas that doesn't have the support of the medical health industry, doesn't have the support of the mental health industry, as well as the social services industry in Rosemond, California, is nonexistent. Our kids are in poverty, and they don't have the support they need. And by sending the message that it's not a matter of legal or illegal, it's a matter of just maturity. It's okay to have cannabis, it's okay to use cannabis, but it's not a matter of whether or not it's legal or illegal, good for you or bad for you, just a matter of about how old we are. And so 11, 12, and 13-year-olds are finding or experimenting for the first time, first and second time usage. Again, please help us with our fiduciary responsibility. Ban legalized marijuana so that we can, in Rosemond, California, help our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And do we have anyone in the front row that wants to speak? Not yet, not yet, please. I'm going to let this gentleman come forward. So one, and do we have one or two in the front row? Do you want to... We have three. Okay. All right. This is our last speaker in line. I apologize to everyone. We've been going for over two hours. Please come forward, sir, and then we'll go to the three folks in the front row, and then I'm closing the public hearing.
I do, Board of Directors. My name is Kelvin McGee, Kelvin McGee. I am the Senior Pastor of the Goodness and Mercy Ministries, and I am a believer in Jesus Christ. I've heard a lot of strong people give great testimonies, give great statistics, and do it with bravery and boldness. So I figure I can do the same thing. We hear a lot of things about marijuana, but one thing about it that I've heard for many years, even in school, that marijuana can affect the brain cells. I am a person that has been affected by it personally. My brother, who is now in his grave, started taking marijuana, and it affected his brain cells, which induced a schizophrenia. And because of that, he began to talk to himself, and eventually kept on with this various behavior. I used to live with him, hear him talk all at night and whatnot, and eventually, he's gone. So I stand here as a... So I stand here as a person that's been affected by it personally. I'm not against people who truly use it medically speaking with a sincere heart, but unfortunately, because we're a pastor, I have seen people take the same medical marijuana and sell it. So that's why I say with a sincere heart. So yes, it can. I am not, I believe in the ban. I believe that it's not conducive, it's not a conducive item. Anything that affects you mentally, it's not good. Anything that affects you mentally is not good. I've seen it happen, and I thank you for this time. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. The three speakers in the front row.
Yes, glad to be here. Okay. My name is Jackie Sullivan, longtime City Council member. I've worked with three of you on a city level, and this is probably one of the most important decisions for our community that we are being faced with. I feel very strongly about this. The city of Bakersfield has continued with the strong stance on the ban, and I think that is the right thing to do. I was recently referred to as a flag-waver and promoter of "In God We Trust." Happy to be that that was nothing negative. But we are the decision-makers for our community and our county. There are 11 cities in our county. Bakersfield, of course, is the largest. We are strongly opposing marijuana. We are supporting the ban. And you are the covering for our county. I understand that every city other than the one of our cities, California City, is supporting the ban. So how could you do anything other than be the agency for covering the cities in Kern County? I appreciate our sheriff, our police chief. They are public safety. They are responsible for the safety for our community. Also, education. They know what this, what, I'm against all drugs, but cannabis, now let's just call it what it is, it's marijuana. It is a gateway, but it's not good for our community. It's not good to our families. And what the message that we will be sending to our community and our residents, it's not something that we want to do. We are a conservative county. We are elected by a conservative community and conservative county. It's very important that we do the right thing and that we oppose the sale, support the ban on marijuana. It's our responsibility as decision-makers and guide and influence for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Morning. My name is Jan Gary, and I'd just say right off, I back what Donnie Youngblood said. I agree with Jackie and what she said. And I just don't see any blessing coming out of rebellion, and right now, our state is in rebellion about this toward the federal government, and I just feel that is just wrong. And the main thing is I just don't see blessing coming out of this. And some letters kept coming to my mind. I think some of you might remember WWJD. I think that's what you have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, sir, did you want to speak? Okay, please come forward. You're the last speaker, and I'm closing the public hearing.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael-
Raise the, measure the microphone, please. Raise it up a little bit. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Michael Lee. I've been offering educational and consulting services on an international level for about 11 years now on such topics as cannabis. And I met with a lot of doctors, a lot of researchers, a lot of cultivators all over the world, and I just wanted to share my opinion on this topic. The reality is such that teenagers do abuse the cannabis, and the reason for that, because they see it as something that makes them cool, and they are immature, and that's where this problem originates from. Another thing is that you do have an illegal market for cannabis. It's undeniable. And the more you try to prohibit the cannabis, the more favorable illegal market becomes, and the more money they make, so to speak. You won't be able to solve this problem if you don't get the support of the cannabis community, because it's a small community and everybody knows everybody. It's much better to allow it and to regulate it. A lot of people voiced their opinions here, and I agree with some of them, and unfortunately, the majority of them are uneducated. And the uneducational part comes from the fact that all the negative aspects of cannabis originate not from the plant, but from the chemicals people put in it. So when people consume cannabis produced by illegal producers, the body reacts not to the cannabis, but it reacts to the chemicals that are in the plant. That's where you have all the nausea, mental problems, and everything that originates from the cannabis. When cannabis is produced organically without the chemicals, then you have medicational effects. You're clean, you understand what's going on, you're basically a functional member of society. You have an opportunity to shape this industry into the right direction if you will regulate it, if you will allow it. You will have an opportunity to set standards for testing and basically set the tone and shape it into the right direction, so people will be much safer, and you will take the finances away from the illegal markets, and you will discourage anyone to do it illegally. And people are more willing and people are more forthcoming to communicate and work with the county and work with the people who try to present opportunities for local growers and cultivators to become legal, and I hope you'll find the wisdom and courage to make the right decision. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period on this item. I'm going to close the public hearing. We were able to accommodate 39 speakers.
Can we continue this till after-
No, we're not going to continue the public comment period. And we're going to close the public comment period. We're going to adjourn to closed session. We have a closed session. Mr. Turnipseed?
I'm sorry I was out of the room, but I had a personal necessity for you to cut off discussion, or I would have been standing in line. You know, I sit here every meeting.
All right. Come forward, Mr. Turnipseed.
One minute of your time. I'll be short, to the point.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration. I'm Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Taxpayer Association. As we know from history, bans do not work. Personal use of cannabis will soon be legal. A ban is more the same, crime, illegal activity, and everything else bothers them. The reality is the county cannot ban the personal use of cannabis. Most troubling is that if a ban is established, the county will face petitions to revoke the ban, and with 13,300 signatures, we'll have to have a new special election like the past. Kern County needs proactive regulation to ensure public health, safety, welfare, and compatible land use to address the new normal. The legal personal use in the state of California, planning the issue down the road is really not an option. And I'll remind you, the most effective tool you have in your toolbox is land use regulation. Don't lose the opportunity to use it because somebody writes a petition or initiative that doesn't have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Mr. Grollo, come forward, please. I just noticed you in the back. This is Jose Grollo. He's the mayor of Arvin, and out of respect for the offshoot hole and the number of folks that you represent, I'll allow you to speak. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to make clear first off that I'm not here representing the entire City Council of Arvin, but I will speak to that, though I think that I support everybody who says that they want to keep these dispensaries out of their communities, out of the reach of kids, and making sure that, you know, we support the communities. But the best way we can do that is through regulation. As Mr. Turnipseed said in terms of prohibition, the status quo isn't working. And so the best way that we can make sure that these edibles don't fall into our kids' hands, that they aren't advertised to our kids, is through regulation. And the county can go ahead and get revenue to be able to effectively enforce this, and so I just want to say that. And although that I am not authorized to speak on behalf of the City Council, what I can say is that the Planning Commission is going to consider an ordinance next Tuesday, or actually on the 30th, and an ordinance on regulation will go before the Arvin City Council, so we can preserve our right to be able to adopt regulations in the future for cultivation or what have you. And so, you know, we are one of the cities considering moving forward with regulation, and I urge that the Board of Supervisors support Plan B regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So what we're going to do, I'm closing the public hearing. We are going to come back at the 2:00 PM session, but this is going to afford staff an opportunity to respond, to develop their responses to any comments that were made, give any remaining testimony, and then the board members, I'll then go to the board, so the board members can make their comments, and then we'll render a decision on this. I did trail item four and five this morning so we could get to the, excuse me? Thank you. Yeah, so I do need a motion to continue this item to the 2:00 PM session. This will be item, I believe it will be item A on our 2:00 PM session.
I'd make that motion, and do we also need to trail those two items that were-
No, I'm going to go ahead and do those two.
Now, okay. So it's only to continue this to 2:00?
Yes. Yes. We have a motion second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, thank you. Now, item four, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Once again, not on this agenda. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. So I'd ask if there's anyone who would like to make a public statement on a matter not on this agenda. Do we have any?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Seeing none, board member announcements or reports?
I got one.
Supervisor Gleason?
Real quick, I'm sorry. I have to because the Hot Park After Dock was such a great success. Our library and our CAO's office and our general services, parks and rec folk did a wonderful job. Thank you, Andy, for all you did. 2,000 people, we had 19 spay and neuters, we had over 100 library cods, we had a great time, and it was a great way to roll out this board's new perspective on how we're going to deal with our parks in the future. So Andy, CAO's office, and Jeff Hill, thank you all for everything you did. And the 20-plus volunteers from the county, thank you all.
Make if I could, or excuse me, chairman, if I could. I was there, I saw it, I saw the kids, the families, the costumes. That was totally remarkable. Had a blast, and I am so impressed with your vision, your partnership, and thinking outside the box, I have a renewed sense of hope about our parks, and I'm so grateful. So hats off.
Thank you. Thank you, supervisors. As I said, we have one item to consider in closed session. This is a county under the, this is an item under the county administrative office. It has to do with labor negotiations, item 42, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We're adjourned. We'll be back at 2:00.